And I want to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of Larkspur City Council on Wednesday, May 5. And we are starting at I think six thirty two, so pretty much right on time. So this is, as is our habit these days, a video conference on Zoom. The Zoom LinkedIn call number information is posted on the city's website. For those of you who are listening would like to join us in that way. So I think at the outset, we'll just take a roll call of the city council.
Councilmember Candel.
I am here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Helmer.
Here.
Mayor Harrow.
Here. And with that, I ask for those who wish to join us all in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, America, to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. That's my favorite part. All right. With that, I think we can move on to agenda item number two, which is public comment, which is an opportunity for the public to provide their comments on matters that are not on the agenda and to address the city council with regard to their concerns about whatever they wish. I want to make sure, I don't know how many people we may have in the queue, but please keep your comments limited to two to three minutes if possible. We are not permitted to take any action on any comments that are shared during this period of the meeting. So with that, anyone from the public?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any emails, public comments? And there is no public comment.
Okay, all right. Well, with that, I think we'll close agenda item number two and move on to three, which is presentations and proclamations. And we have a several important ones. So we'll start with three point one, which has to do with our drought situation. And I think we have a presentation by Paul Selyer from the Marin Municipal Water District. So please, if we can share screens with with Paul.
Yes. Good evening, council members. Thank you for having us. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I am not able to share my screen just yet. If you could do that, I will pull up our presentation. And I, while we're waiting, I noticed that Dr. Larry Russell or Division Five Board Member is present tonight to help me with questions that I forget the answers to. Dr. Russell.
Good evening, guys. I'm your director and anything that I can do to help the city of Larkspur, just let me know. We're here tonight to talk about water conservation. As you know, we've been in a very tough rainfall period and we all need to pull together and do whatever we can do to use the least amount of water possible. So with that, go ahead and do it, Paul.
Great. Thank you. And thank you again all. So as you can see from the picture here, this is our Nikasio reservoir and drought is indeed here. As we'll learn tonight, I'm going to briefly step through our current water supply status. We'll go through water use restrictions that are going to help us get through this period with our residents and spend some time talking about conservation and ways that we can help ourselves and using the water districts incentives to help save water. So with that, I'll jump into our water supply. So 2020 calendar year 2020 was the second driest year in 90 years. If we add on the first four months of 2021, that sixteen month period from January of 2020 to April 2021 is actually the driest sixteen months in 142 years of rainfall records that the district has. So we are indeed in a pretty severe drought. Normally this time of year, we would expect our reservoirs to be about 91% capacity. Today we find ourselves at just slightly less than 50% capacity. In terms of rainfall visually visually here, you can see the green line representing our current rainfall and we're just a hair over 20 inches, about 20 and a half inches. The brown line is of course the drought of record at 1976, 77. So we have less rainfall than the sort of epic drought of record. Of course, our storage is a little better than it was in 77. Since 77, we've constructed Suluhuli Reservoir, which is 10,000 acre feet, and we've doubled the size of Kent Reservoir. Nonetheless, since that enlargement of storage capacity was completed in 1984, we find ourselves today at just around 40,000 acre feet as of May 1st, which is the lowest storage level in our reservoirs since the enlargement. So again, more messages to let us know that we are indeed in a dire situation. Looking at our projections for reservoir storage, this is a little bit complicated. So the black line is our historical path. So we were last February, we were sitting at about 75,000 acre feet of water. Today, we again are here at about 40,000 acre feet. These dashed lines, the blue dashed line is our projection through summer. So we expect to be somewhere around here in summer without any conservation. If we did nothing at all, this is where we would end up at the end of summer. As the lines diverge, the green line represents sort of a normal rainfall. If we were to just receive our normal rainfall pattern, this is what our storage levels would look like. The blue dashed line is 50% of normal rainfall and the orange line is 25% of normal rainfall. The solid line here is a representation of how our storage will look if we're successful with conservation. So this is, this is representing the whole as a district wide. If we're able to conserve 40% of our demand, this is where our storage levels will be. So we'll be just right around 30,000 acre feet in December of this year. So with that, what have we been doing as an agency? Well, obviously we've been monitoring this situation since last year. As you know, our winters are very flashy in terms of volume of rainfall can come very, very quickly. And so in even in mid February, the Marin Municipal Water District's Board of Directors issued a drought proclamation asking for voluntary conservation of water. And as the dry weather continued through spring, on April 20th, the board declared a water shortage emergency and adopted some new restrictions for water use. And just yesterday, the Board of Directors added to that certain restrictions regarding irrigation. So while we have a lot of restrictions, I'm just going to go through a couple of them here. Really our goal as a district why this is not individual goals, this is as a district. We'd like to reduce our summer water use by 40%. So our restrictions are geared towards that overall savings. And some of these restrictions, obviously irrigation. So between winter and summer, our water demands basically double. So that indicates that the significant use of water is in irrigation, particularly turf outdoors. And so a couple of these first two restrictions target irrigation, specifically spray irrigation being limited to two days a week, while drip irrigation is limited to three days a week. And just some sensible other actions. For example, pools left uncovered are subject to vapor transpiration and it's a fairly significant amount. And so the addition of pool covers for pools and spas is required. And then some other sort of common sense things like power washing of homes, driveways, sidewalks and things like that. And for those of us who've been in California for any length of time, we know that watering, when it's hot outside is a bad idea. So so no watering during daytime between nine and seven PM. Some of the other restrictions, again gutter flooding. So this would just be an indication, maybe a sprinkler is broken or somebody's outside washing a car without a shut off nozzle on the end of a hose, that sort of a thing. And of course fixing leaks, these are just things that we would probably do anyway if we knew about them. Golf courses, of course, we have three golf courses in Marin. They're they're subject to restrictions the same as the rest of us will be. We're asking, requiring in fact, no watering of grass on public medians and no using of potable water where things like recycled water could be used for dust control sewer flushing or street cleaning. And similarly, no refilling of or topping off of decorative fountains. So our approach generally is one of education. We're not an agency that's set up for enforcement activities and in general, education will work better. So while we do recognize that education is an important part of it, we also realize that we can't capture every possible situation. For that reason, we've included the flexible variance process. And you can contact us at this email variance@marinwater.org where we can individually address any hardships that people or indeed even companies may have. Of course, if you are caught or are violating restrictions, the first note, first contact will be a notice. And second violations will be a sort of tap on the wrist with a $25 fine. And then subsequent fine violations, excuse me, will be fined $250. A lot of rules and restrictions. There will not be a test at the end of the presentation tonight, but you can find this information at marinwater.org/waterrules. A lot of common sense really. And common sense prevails also in conservation tips. So you know, turning off and watering by hand is one option. If you didn't want to maybe pursue smart irrigation controllers and some of these controllers, you know, take into account your soil conditions, the weather, the type of plants that you have, and they'll automatically adjust the watering to both the time of year and the type of plant that you have. And of course, replacing your lawn, which is tends to be rather thirsty with water efficient landscaping is a good way to go. And then again, a lot of this is common sense, doing little things that we can do in the household that will just stop the water running from installing more efficient fixtures to just turning off the water while you brush your teeth. Very simple things. And you know, in my house, it takes a couple of minutes before the hot water in the shower comes on. And so there's a couple of five gallon buckets in there that you just use to collect that water. And then that can be applied to the plant or used for for other purposes. We have a number of programs and incentives to sort of help offset it. It's again, we like to educate more than enforce. And so while restrictions are necessary, it's also important for us to have incentives to help people make some of these changes. So we have conservation staff who can do sort of consult conservation staff, excuse me, they can do phone consultations to help you figure out what rebates might work for you. And of course, there are a few widgets like shut off novels and more efficient fixtures that we have. Those can be sent to you free of charge. Just recently, the Marin Municipal Water District's Board of Directors increased the rebate for lawn replacement from $1 a square foot to $3 a square foot. This is a sort of a best in class rebate, probably in the West. And so we're hoping folks will really take advantage of this. It's $3 a square foot through October of this year. And we're also setting up through a local nonprofit the ability for, you know, you can contact us and set up to have someone come in and they will completely mulch your lawn for you. So and then after the drought is over, then you can replant with water efficient landscaping. We have again, the gadgets, which I'm a big fan of myself. These irrigation controllers that I mentioned, they take advantage of weather conditions and soil. There's a ton of information, especially on the ratio irrigation controllers. And some pretty generous rebates. These are a couple hundred dollars apiece normally. And with a hundred dollar rebate, you can expect to pay $70 for the ratio. If it's an eight station or $90 if it's a larger 16 station irrigation controller. And of course, we've had almost a perennial, I think, high efficiency clothes washer rebate of 100 bucks. There are other programs that may be suitable for folks and they're certainly interesting to learn about. There's a gray water laundry to landscape rebate. And of course, rain barrels and cisterns, which up to a thousand dollars of rebates at 50 cents a gallon for storage. Another exciting technology is is a company by the name of Flume. And they offer a device that literally with a aid of a rubber band straps to your water meter and then connects through your wifi and gives you almost real time water use in your house. And they report that a number of customers who put these units on their water meters very, very quickly find leaks. And others that don't are able to set water budgets for themselves and really understand how and where they're using water. I mentioned the hot water in my house takes a while to heat up. And so there's a rebate that the district has of $50 to help pay for recirculating pump. And of course, I mentioned pool covers. And while there are elaborate pool colors that covers that may cost thousands of dollars, there are also much simpler ones that may be costing the range of a couple hundred dollars. And a hundred dollar rebate will help encourage folks in that area as well. Of course, we need your help. Everyone in Marin that's using water, we need help to get the message out. And some of the ways we can do that is by putting out yard signs and you may have seen some of these droughters here conserve water. And of course, we have brochures and other materials and information at marinwater.org/ conserve. And we'd love to hear from you if you've got any ideas that you don't see us pursuing as well. Again, everybody, and if we can get the kids encouraged and interested in saving water, it will really be sort of a way for them to lead us into the future. Water use in Marin has been something that we've taken granted for granted for a number of years and maybe the time for a change and how we we look at water is coming. Again, so tonight we've looked at our water supply situation. We're historically low. The drought that we're in is historic itself. We've got a number of water use restrictions on the books and we've got a equal number of great incentives and programs that folks can take advantage of to help reduce the use of water. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them at this time.
Paul, Paul, thank you. It's Kevin. That was a very helpful presentation. I'm wondering if you could repeat just for those who may be listening in, but maybe not watching our council meeting on on Zoom, if you can repeat the contact information, the telephone number and the website, just do it verbally, please.
Yes, the website is marinwater.org/ conserve. And the telephone number is 415-945-1520.
And by calling or connecting with either of those two resources, we can find out about getting water saving appliances or whatever it is that you've got available, signs that we could put in our front yard, anything of that sort. Do you guys deliver those things or does somebody have to actually go down to the water district?
Oh, great question. Yeah. So there is. So for the most part, folks will come down to the water district and pick them up in that sort of a contactless manner. We'll package the signs with, depending on how many you would like with a name on them. And then you'll just come by and pick them up whenever is convenient for you.
So somebody can just show up at the water district and you guys will lead us through the process and get what we need.
Yep.
Great. Perfect. Any other comments or questions from the council? And I see Scott.
Thank you. Paul, fantastic presentation. I love the rebate program. I think it's brilliant. And you know, hopefully people take advantage of that. The one thing that I had a question about is there seems to be a balancing act between water and fire that I go past the median on the way to my house and it's all dead, dry. You know, looks like fire tinder. And I am just wondering if when you came up with this plan, if you spoke with people, you know, through the fire district and just made sure what we were doing is safe. Because I would, I would hate to try to prevent one problem, but inadvertently cause another.
Yeah, it, you know, of course there is a nexus. And as we enter and are in the drought, right? The higher use for water is always going to be drinking. Naturally, water will be used for firefighting when it occurs. But I think what we need to do is to focus on our first use for water. And in the case of the dry median that you're talking about, I think perhaps a solution might be that that material should be removed until we're out of the drought and then a different type of landscaping put in. I know that's an easy thing for me to say, but it's a good, it's a good point.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the council? I see Vice Mayor Helmer.
Hi, Paul. Could you tell us what progress is being made on the use of recycled water?
Yes, great question. Thank you, Vice Mayor. So you may know that the district Marin Municipal Waters, which has had a recycled water facility out in the Las Galinas area since, since actually about 1976. In fact, in that drought, 76, 77, we were pilot testing recycled water. And residents would drive up and say, hey, can I get some of that? And so that's when we knew we had a good idea. At least that's the anecdotal story. Since then, in about 1981, we constructed a 1 million gallon a day recycled water treatment plant, which was expanded into 89 to 2 million gallons a day. And most recently, we partnered with Las Galinas Sanitary District as our old plant had had sort of served its useful life. And we paid to expand the Las Galinas Recycled Water Treatment Facility. And that's that facility is currently producing recycled water for us. So the recycled water network or pipe network is concentrated in the Terre Linda area. And really, we haven't been able, have not expanded beyond the Terre Linda area largely due to cost. As you know, putting pipes, it requires a completely separate pipe network and getting that those pipes over to Larkspur and to other areas in the district would be very, very expensive. It is something that we look at regularly and can revisit and are actively seeking grants to try to knock the cost down for those types of projects.
I urge you to make more progress on that and other things such as also, I want to ask you about providing backup power to pump stations. Could you please give me an update on that?
Yes. So so you may have noticed that during the last couple of years with the rather serious PSPS events that PG&E had put us through, particularly in 2019, when most of Marin County, if not all of it, I think, was lost power. You would, you may recall that you never ran out of water. And the reason for that was is because the Board of Directors authorized staff to rent generators to power pump stations during that event. And that was, I think it was a five day event all around. So since then, we've developed a plan where we purchased generators and we we are able to run all the pump stations that we need to, to keep folks in water throughout an extended power outage.
I think it should also indicate, Paul, that we've are in the process of installing a large generator at San Geronimo. And that will ensure we can get the water up over the hill and down into Southern Marin to be served.
Excellent point. Yes, we're installing actually a three megawatt generator at the San Geronimo Treatment Plant.
And just for perspective, that's the size of a locomotive motor.
And that's being fueled by what? Gasoline, diesel?
Diesel. Diesel.
I hope we can make progress on on both those fronts to improve on those conditions. Thanks.
I think we are making progress. I think our progress is good. The reclaimed water is a stickier one. You might want to talk to your friends in San Rafael because one of the issues there is digging up the streets. So you know, it's, there's no place to put these pipes without digging up the street. So that's been kind of a slowing agent. For your information, the county office building is served with reclaimed water and the embassy suites and those buildings around that area all get reclaimed water for irrigation and for toilet flushing. So you know, it's a great idea. It's just a little pricey, as Paul said. We're also looking at the implementation of direct potable reuse, which means basically treating wastewater to drinking water standards and mixing it in with drinking water. So that that's something that's become kind of the new version of the purple pipe systems. So we're waiting for the state to finish their evaluation. It's doing about a year. And then, you know, our first target is, my first target at least is San Quentin. There are large water user by far, and they think they're a perfect candidate for that application. There's a sewage plant right across the street, as you know, across freeway.
Well, I hope that the state provides support for that concept. It's been perking around for quite a while. And I know there's a lot of resistance in different communities around the state to that concept. But I hope we'll take a progressive attitude towards it.
Including, including the prisoners' union, which I found out about when I started promoting this.
Oh, and their their view is what?
No, they don't want it.
No, yeah. Okay, any other comments from the council?
My comments, I made my, I made my comments because I, I think I'm pointing out deficiencies. Not something we should strive for, but things we should have. So I hope we can make some progress. Thanks.
Well, as I said, in the answer, we're fine on the generator side. We're 100% at and all the generators we need, we have owned them and they're here. We're just waiting for that three megawatt unit to go into San Geronimo. And then we have got a complete backup of the water system basically facing any kind of a, an event like earthquake or whatever. So we've made a lot of progress on that, spent a lot of money doing it. And I do appreciate your comments on the reclaimed water, the recycled water. We're very much in favor of the progression. It's just difficult, as Paul said, because of the double distribution system.
Kind of a sticky wicket. I think I saw Councilmember Catherine Way had her hand up.
Yes. Hi, thank you, Paul, for this presentation. I have just a short question. The rebate and financial incentive program, is that open to all ratepayers or is there an income requirement? A low income requirement?
Yeah, no, thank you, Councilmember. All, everyone is eligible. There's no qualification for it. And it just really reflects our desire to, to, you know, who saves the water, we're agnostic about that. We really just want to encourage folks to save generally and make those changes in their lifestyle.
Okay. And I see on all, on social media already, a lot of water scolding going on and about people using their lawn too much. You said you have a website, there's an area using their lawn too much. You said you have a website, there's an area where people can report on the website?
There, there is, I think at Marinwater.org/conserve.
Consider, okay.
You can, you can find a lot of information on that page as well.
Right, thanks.
Okay, I think Councilmember Gabe Paulson has his hand up.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Paul, thanks so much for the presentation. I had two questions. The first one is, you know, can you give us some idea of what activities in Larkspur or in Central Marin are the best targets for conservation? So, you know, we've talked about schools, you know, there's businesses, you know, San Quentin is state, but you know, just to give us a sense of proportion, you know, where do we see the most waste, you know, where we could conserve? And then my second question is the toolbox that you have of, you know, education and incentives like rebates and even fines. Is, is there any thought about changing the rates? So let's say we get to that graph where, you know, we have low rainfalls and we haven't conserve. Do you, do you anticipate that the water rates may actually go up as a form of, of, you know, I'm changing behaviors?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. To your, your first question about where the biggest bang for the buck, if you like, would be for savings, was I, I mentioned in, in the presentation briefly that we see our water demand double between winter and summer, which really points us to irrigation. And so I think as a, as a, as a town, just as a homeowner, I think that's where I would focus. So that's, that's, that's the first component there. The, the second in terms of water rates, I think it's important for us to know that, that this will be and has been in all of the prior droughts. Actually, we reviewed actions that the board had taken in seventy six through seventy seven and in nineteen eighty seven through ninety two, which was a slightly longer drought. And what we discovered, and it's not uncommon, right, it's an iterative process or adaptive, we would say today. So we'll, we'll establish a set of restrictions as we have. And for example, two days a week of spray irrigation might become one day. But we will also, to your point, I think at some point be considering and what we saw in prior droughts was that rates were an effective tool at modifying those behaviors.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, for example, I know PG&E tries to get people to charge their cars at nighttime. So, you know, it, it, you know, it could, I'm just also wondering what latitude you have, you know, is there a state regulatory board which would prevent you from, you know, arbitrarily changing rates or how can this be worked out? Because, you know, the pessimistic scenario looks pretty dire, you know, if we use the twenty plus thousand, you know, acre feet, then, you know, what are we left with? And, and so I, I'm imagining that you haven't made that decision and maybe I'm asking about a contingency.
Right, so to the question on regulation, yes, the rate process is heavily regulated and referred to as a two eighteen process. And just penciling it out, maybe, you know, if we were to start today, we might be getting there. If we were to do some, something different. So there are drought rates on the books that the Board of Directors could choose to enact pretty much at any time. They're somewhat limited. If we chose to do something a little more sophisticated, then we would need to go through a two eighteen process. And that might not be ready to sort of hit the streets, as it were, until August. And that's just the regulatory delays to get to that point.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's correct, Paul. It's my understanding that the two eighteen process on the drought rate has already been done. So what we have on the books are certain volume, storage volumes at certain dates. On April first, if we're at forty thousand acre feet, it, it, the rules, the regulations inside the water district require us to go into mandatory conservation and a twenty five percent rate increase along with a twenty five percent mandatory reduction. So right now, we're still in the voluntary range. We're at forty four thousand acre feet on April first. So we're a little higher than that. We are very concerned as a board about what to do and when to do it. Basically, what we're asking everyone to do is just use the minimal amount of water you can. My wife and I, we have a automation, automatic meter installed at our house. Last week, we were able to use four gallons on one day and eight gallons on another. Our grass does not look good, but, you know, we're keeping the water usage to the absolute minimum. And rather than getting hung up on what reductions we need and that kind of thing, I think we just have to focus on using the least amount of water that we can. That's really the goal that each of us should have. We're all in this together. And, you know, we ask for your help in doing that as, as a city. And we're here to help you. If you have any questions or need any help, feel free to call Paul, feel free to call me and we'll do whatever we can do for you.
Thanks, thanks, Larry. Any other comments or questions from the council? I have one. Anyone else want to jump in? Just, so this is Kevin. You know, whatever these circumstances arise, one thing that always kind of pops up is the pipeline across the San Rafael Bridge. And I think I've seen some reporting on that as something maybe potentially under consideration. Is, is that under consideration? Is that a viable option? Or where, where, where would we be on that?
Thank you, Mayor. So we're looking at projects like that under the banner of water transfers. And there, there are a number of sort of a couple of places where we can look to getting water. Across the bridge certainly is an option. At this point, however, I would say characterize it as a conceptual option, right? That there have been no firm agreements. We, it's a complex, right? With their multiple agencies, Caltrans. We need to find out hydraulic capacity in East Bay Mud System pump station design. So it's a, it is a, and then of course, we may need to secure water rights to, to get water to put in the pipeline, to get it across the bridge. So there's a lot of unknowns and a good deal of uncertainty with that particular project.
Yeah, it, if you remember back to seventy six, that water actually came from the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. They allocated the water to us. It was wheeled through the East Bay Mud System. But the water actually came from the State Water Project into East Bay Mud and then East Bay Mud sent us their water in equal amounts. But Paul, Paul is exactly right. This is a, it's a very involved thing. Basically, for perspective, we are okay this year. We're not going to run out of water this summer. It's not an issue of that type. The problem is next year. And, and I think you've, you guys are getting a sense of that. That's where we're concerned. Where we're concerned about is this rainfall just a happenstance? Or is this the new normal? And, you know, those are issues we're going to be dealing with to, to address that kind of, exactly that kind of, of a situation over the next year or so. We are making some changes to the Castagna Pump Station. And that's the one that's up. There's a tank called Castagna. It's about just as you enter Petaluma on the south side of Petaluma. When Caltrans widened the freeway, our pipeline was replaced with a larger pipeline, but we're looking at it pumping even more water down from the Russian River to address the same kind of issues. Basically, these modifications with the pump station would equal the Dsal plant that was proposed in two thousand and four when I first ran for office at a cost of one million dollars instead of a hundred million dollars to build the Dsal plant. So, you know, we're open to every alternative and we're, we're plowing forward to, to fix this problem once and for all in Marin. And we were in pretty good shape until climate change and then things, you know, have changed the ground rules.
Yeah, thanks, Larry. And that, that, that's a very helpful response to my question because obviously there are different strategies that ought to be on, on the table. And I'm certainly not advocating any one of them. And I understand the challenges of taking water from East Bay Mud and what was done before. But there is a, a good likelihood that we are into a new normal and short-term water conservation strategies are important. But I want to make sure we're looking in the, in the long haul about how we make sure we have a, we have a robust water supply system in Marin County.
Oh, we, we are.
Oh, I know, I know, I know you are. I just wanted to get you to say that. That's okay. Anyway, so any other comments from the council? I want to open up to the public for any comments or questions. Allison, do we have anybody raising their hand?
Thank you. I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any emails, public comment. And there is no public comment.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, with that, I think we'll close the meeting with thanks to Paul and to Larry for very helpful updates on where you guys are and how we can work with you. And we look forward to seeing you frequently in our meetings.
Sorry, yes. Appreciate your time, Har Har and Council. We appreciate your time.
We, we doubly appreciate yours. Thank you very much. And I think with that, we'll close item three point one and send these guys on their way unless they want to hang around.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Three point two is our annual update from the Central Marin Police Authority. And I think we may have our chief, there he popped up, Chief Norton, and I think we can turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Har Har and members of the council. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here.
There you go.
Seeing something? All right. And all right, and can you see the cursor moving around? I was going to kind of use that. Are you able to see that cursor? Not so much?
Not so much.
Okay, fair enough. So I'll just start off, no surprise, twenty twenty was a very challenging year for your police department as it was for the whole world. For me, it was definitely the, the most challenging year in my twenty year career. We were faced with something we've never dealt with regarding the pandemic. And we quickly had to evolve and figure out how we were going to keep our, you know, fifty plus employees safe during this while they continued to come to work twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. And we also were interacting still a lot with the public. So we didn't want our employees to catch COVID, but we also didn't want any of our employees testing positive and becoming a super spreader by going around to our, our communities. I am happy to report that, you know, knock on wood, as of today, we haven't had any employees contract COVID in the course of employment. We haven't had any transmissions at our station. So that being said, our report this year is going to look a little different than years past because the numbers are incredibly skewed due to COVID and you'll see that right away. But we'll go ahead and go through it. Right off the bat, our calls for service, we generally average about forty two thousand a year. As you can see, the first two months, we were actually trending higher than that. And then March happened. And if you can't see my cursor, I'm looking at the calls for month at the bottom and you can see we went from thirty seven hundred calls for months and then two months we were down to twenty one hundred. So it was a drop of about twenty nine percent. And we went from on average all of last year from a hundred and twenty six calls per day to eighty nine, which is pretty considerable when you think about it. But we were still doing a lot of business and still coming into work every day and handling what needed to be handled. Our top calls for service stats didn't change much. We still were mainly busy at the shopping centers. That's because even though we had a huge drop in March and April, I think it was around June or July that the shopping center started opening back up again. And with that, you know, came a lot of calls for service and crime and what have you. And we still had a lot of action at our high schools, believe it or not in last year. One interesting new thing that kind of popped up is we had three hundred and six calls for service at five nineteen Via Casitas. And when I saw that, I had no idea what that was. That's a residential area near the hospital. And what it ended up being is those were what were, you know, quote unquote, called an accidental or butt dial nine one one to that cell tower. So we average about one a day of someone accidentally calling nine one one and we might not have to dispatch an officer to that, but our dispatcher has to stop what they're doing and call back and try and get ahold of that person to make sure it wasn't accidental call and, and everything's okay. Lucky Shopping Center is right at a Doherty and Magnolia, if you're wondering. That's also in Larkspur. Top calls for service, you know, quiet year. We had eleven hundred accidental nine one one calls. We made a thousand traffic stops. We had a bunch of medical assists, citizens assistance and advice. The one nice thing about this is I can't remember ever having a graph like this where a crime wasn't listed as one of our calls for service. So that was actually one of the positives out of last year. As you'll get see, our traffic accident and crime was down considerably from years past.
Mike, I'm sorry, can I just go back to?
Sure.
Back a slide.
This one?
No, one right before it.
Okay.
On, on the bottom there, I'm just trying to understand what the things mean on the bottom, like wireless.
That's the wireless, no distress. That's your, your accidental nine one one call. In the city of Larkspur, we had twenty five hundred of those last year. Some are from residences, some are businesses, some can be if you have a panic alarm, things like that. Assist Medical Agency, that's us being dispatched to help out fire on their medical calls they handle. Citizen assist could be anything. It could be advice regarding a neighbor, just kind of your catchall. That and advice to citizen. It's just however the dispatch classifies it. They're kind of one in the same, to be honest with you. Miscellaneous code violation, that would be all your municipal codes in Larkspur. That could be leaf blowers, my neighbor's TV is on too loud, there's a dog off leash, things like that. Audible alarm, that's home and commercial alarms just going off. We get dispatched out to those when there's a burglar alarm going off. Assist fire, that's basically other times we're helping the fire department. It doesn't involve a medical call. It's could be a traffic accident. It could be a smell of smoke in the area. It could be a lot of things. Extra patrol request, that is when a community member basically reaches out to us and asks for extra patrol, whether it's regarding a problem they're having, they're seen in a park or speeders going down their street and people not stopping at stop signs, things like that. And meet a citizen is also kind of a catchall that can be lumped in under with this advice to citizen, citizen assist. It's just kind of engineer. Does that answer your question?
Perfectly, thank you.
Okay, not a problem. I'm going kind of quick because I know that first presentation, I, I actually really enjoyed it, even though it was very concerning, but it was kind of long and I know you probably have a long night. So feel free to interrupt me or, or we can handle any questions at the end. I think we were here. So traffic stops. We did almost three thousand stops in twenty twenty. Those are all traffic stops, which is about fifty two percent less than we did the year before. And that was done on purpose. That was basically like I talked about. I wanted our officers, you can see the trends here. I wanted our officers not interacting with the public more than they really had to. Because even though we can have our officer wearing a mask to do a traffic stop, it's if you've ever been pulled over, you're, you're quite close to each other and often the driver isn't wearing a mask and we're trying to really prevent that issue from happening. So the instructions were, don't go out and, and look for everything to pull over you can find, but more importantly, if you see something you have to handle, handle it. So that's your, you know, very excessive speeding or blatant running of stop signs, things like that. We still managed to do three thousand traffic stops, which is, which is pretty high considering twenty twenty, what was going on. And that, these are, that's for total jurisdiction, I should say. It ended up just some of our main spots ended up still being in Larkspur. This continues to be one of our, our accident prone areas, East Sir Francis Drake and Larkspur Landing Circle. It's right by the ferry terminal, basically. We have a lot of traffic collisions there and a lot of issues. If you've ever gone through there, your, your Public Works Director could probably speak to it. I'm sure he has some numbers, but I think it's probably the most trafficked road in our jurisdiction in terms of volumes of cars. The hub in San Anselmo might be close, but I don't think it's that high. Lucky Supermarket Shopping Center and Redwood are probably one in the same. We routinely get a lot of high speeders going kind of right in front of our station and by the schools. So we tend to work that a lot because we don't have a ton of accidents there, but You have um a high likelihood of something really bad happening with the middle school students crossing the street and going to school there and the high school students as well. Uh, Magnolia and Doherty kind of more of the same. You're in that same general area. And then finally, Warnham and Nellin, that's probably more nighttime stops occurring there as well as some pedestrian violations, and that is um. Right next to uh DMV. And you can see in Larkspur, um, about a third of all our traffic stops were conducted in Larkspur, and we did a thousand there, and there's your uh your top five locations that we just talked about. Those will make more sense too when we get to the accidents or collisions at the end, and you'll see why we work certain areas that we do. Um, reports, these are time consuming. Um. This is not just a call for service. This is when an officer has to go out and physically take a report, probably from the time the officer's dispatched to when the report is finally approved. Um, you're looking at several hours of time that goes into it, from taking the call to writing the report, to having the supervisor approve it, to having the records um supervisor do the final approval on it. Um, unfortunately, we still had a lot of reports last year, even though our calls for service were down, uh, but we did have twenty five percent less. And that'll make sense when you see the crime statistics as well. Um, reports taken by month, you can see it just kind of fall off the face of the earth in February, March, April. And then kind of spike back up in July. And once again, I'm not positive, but I believe that's when our shopping centers and commercial areas started um. Opening up more and doing a little more business. And um, this is the bulk of where we took reports. As you can see, these are mostly commercial areas and uh one of our high schools. Uh, there was an interesting uptake of, we had a lot of calls for service and reports taken at the Best Western Corder Madera Inn. Um, and that was um, according to my officers, I asked about that, that was used during uh the pandemic as temporary housing. Um, for a a variety of different people, and um we just ended up having some issues out there where we had to go out um on calls for service. And handle some things. Uh, major crimes. Hopefully, what I just did, you can still see me. I'm just trying to play with my uh my Zoom box here so I can uh see this whole thing. Um, I'm gonna focus more on the totals and not the city by city. Um, I think it's a little more truer. Um. We, you know, homicide, we tend to have one about every three years. We did not have one last year. We had one the year before. Um, you know, our uh our total rapes went up a little bit from five to six. Robberies went up a little bit from ten to sixteen. Generally, most of those are um commercial. They're not residential. They're not members of the public working around. A lot of them tend to be drug stores. And they don't necessarily involve a gun or a weapon. Often, it's um a threatening note or just they. Use a physical force or fear to steal things. More interesting, I think, is not so much these, but when you get down to burglaries. Um, this includes car burglaries, house burglaries and commercial. We had a drop of uh forty five percent from twenty nineteen. Um, larceny is a is a theft. That's a a high dollar amount. It's about a thousand dollars or more. We had a drop of twenty seven percent in that. Um, vehicle theft, though, we saw a spike of twenty eight percent, and vehicle thefts have been trending down for years, so that's interesting. I did a little quick research and don't. Not sure how reliable it is, but there was a survey done, just flipping through my notes here, sorry. Um, by a a government agency in California that compared, was looking at crime rates in twenty twenty. Four four major cities in California. I think it was LA, Oakland, San Francisco and San Diego. And uh their larceny went down um thirty four percent. Ours was down twenty seven. Their vehicles went up twenty four percent. Ours was up twenty eight. Um, but their burglaries actually rose twenty percent and ours dropped, but it was interesting that the vehicle theft kind of trended along with the rest of California, as did the larceny.
Uh, Chief, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, just real quick on that slide, um. Under what category would domestic violence fall under?
Um, that's actually gonna be on our next slide. Um, these are what's called part one crimes. And um, don't ask me why they're called part one and part part two. It's a federal thing they came out with years ago, and it's just how we report it. And because we have to report it this way, it's easier for us to gather data. So I'll go ahead and just click to the next slide. We can go through that, and and I think I'll be able to. Answer your question there, because I know that was kind of a a hot topic in the in the media was domestic violence and mental health issues are going up. Because of COVID. So as we work our way down, these are just other crimes. These aren't necessarily all part two crimes, but I picked them because I think they're of interest to the public. And they're interesting to kind of look at and compare the two years. I'm just looking at the percentage differences. You'll see there's a big drop in percent uh possession of drug paraphernalia, possession of controlled substances and under the influence. And really, that reason is not that people started, were using narcotics less last year. It's a lot of our contacts and um and arrests and seizures of drugs come from proactive police enforcement. It's not people calling us saying. You know, I think that car that drove down the street is a drug dealer. Um, whoops, sorry. So based on us doing less traffic stops, we had a lot less arrests and um cases regarding that. Uh, violation of probation, we don't get involved with that, but you can see probation department, that dropped twenty four percent, and that's probably based on some, they were handling that similar to how we were last year. Um, obstruction of justice, that's where people basically fight with us. Um, it dropped thirty four percent, and once again, I don't think it's because people necessarily liked us more last year. I think we were just having less contacts with people. And that can also be shown with the DUI. You had a fifty percent drop in DUIs involving alcohol and drugs. Uh, less traffic stops at night where we're pulling cars over, less arrests we get. Um, battery is interesting. That's, we don't have too many of those. That's a simple like fistfight where charges are pressed. It was about the same. But this is what you're asking about domestic violence. Um, violation of a domestic violence restraining order and domestic battery did go up. Um, you can see that um domestic battery went up a hundred and sixty four percent, and those are obviously just ones we know of that we got involved in. But that kind of is uh backs up what we were hearing was happening and um. And we were working with different county agencies regarding this as well. And then what else is of interest here? Um, you can see shoplifting and petty theft was down a lot just because the businesses were closed. Um, mental commitment stayed about the same, but talking to my officers on the street. They didn't necessarily have a lot more mental health holds. But they said they've been dealing even now with a lot more um calls for service that involve mental issues where. You know, a person maybe two years ago would not be even interacting with us, but it's, they may be falling on hard financial times or depressions getting to them, or they're having suicidal thoughts or. Various other mental issues. It seems to be definitely trending up and um the calls we're dealing with and people were were um speaking with. Uh, identity theft down, and then once again, this is your drunken public disorderly conduct, alcohol, a lot less of those, um, just with people on. Interesting little spike in vandalism, um, and a lot of that, I think, was due to um. Said the the social justice protests that occurred at the end of last year, we saw a lot of uh graffiti and things like that going up, and this is not someone putting a sign up. This is spray painting or destroying property. Um, even though our crime was down considerably, the total loss. Actually went up from last year, almost eight hundred thousand dollars. So even though there was less crimes. Uh, more value was taken throughout the year, especially in commercial burglaries. You can see it almost doubled. Um, only thing that's really of interest in the top offenses where we took reports, which is, um, you can see forty six mental health holds. I will say that, sorry, let me just flip to it here. In terms of just Larkspur, um, auto burglaries, which is where a window gets smashed and your car gets entered. There was twenty six last year. There was a hundred and twenty five in two thousand and nineteen. Ten commercial burglaries, that's usually not, it could be a business gets broken into, but it also could just be someone goes into Nordstrom's with uh burglary tools and booster bags and takes stuff. We had ten last year. We had seventeen the year before. Residential burglaries um was pretty similar. Which surprised me. I thought those would be down a lot because people were home, so um. Generally, all residential burglaries, um, by their definition, someone has to not be there, otherwise they're a robbery. But we had twenty the year before and twenty six, so those actually went up in Larkspur. Um, but that's kind of the high points from this slide. You can see just these categories here make up about half the reports we take in Larkspur, not our calls for service, but our reports. Uh, moving on parking citations, um, you know, pulling over less cars, we're writing less moving tickets. I think also. Rightfully so, for at least uh the first half of twenty twenty, our officers were giving a lot of warnings and not looking to. Give someone else something extra distress about um during the pandemic, but we did. Still write some moving tickets in twenty twenty. We did a thousand total. And there was some parking citations issued as well, and um you can see the drop off, though, was pretty considerable throughout here. Uh, traffic collisions. So they actually were down forty four percent from two thousand and nineteen. And I'll look at the specific jurisdiction, and for those of you that remember, uh, especially in the first few months of the pandemic, the streets were pretty empty. The reason um we do a lot of traffic enforcement at East Drake and Larkspur Landing is that was actually our highest number of collisions, thirteen occurred there. Um. That's the highest number in our whole jurisdiction. A lot of these other ones are shopping centers, so these are kind of your fender benders where people. Hit another car and it's leave a note or don't leave a note, or they back into each other in a parking lot. That's all these shopping center ones. Six ninety nine Red Hill is the hub in San Anselmo, so it's kind of a similar dynamic to uh what you have out by the ferry terminal. And seven eighty Tamil Pious is basically the Tamil Pious overpassing in uh Bedas Freeway on and off ramps in Corder Madera. And uh the rest are shopping centers. And just going to my notes one more time. Uh, in terms of non-injury accidents, last year we had four hundred and thirty, this year two thirty five. This is total jurisdiction. And um. Serious or a minor injury, we had forty two and the year before we had fifty four, and our amount of uh. You know, more serious injuries is about the same. So what we found was there's a lot less fender benders, and if a car accident did occur. There's a good chance someone at least had a minor injury, if not a more significant one, which trends with less cars on the street. Um, vehicles are traveling at a higher rate of speed. People aren't necessarily driving better, but if they are gonna have a collision, it's less likely, but it's gonna be more serious. And then in Larkspur. Kind of the same same trends. You had a hundred and sixty five non-injury accidents last year. And minor injury, you had sixteen, and it's down to thirteen, and you can see the uh collision spots again. And then this is kind of comparing um twenty nineteen to last year, just reiterating, the calls for service stats were down. Twenty nine percent, our traffic stops were down, reports taken were down, moving and parking citations were down quite a bit. And traffic collisions were down. And then you can see the um last year compared to a a five year average. Those of you who have sat through this, this is kind of a new slide. I had our our person who helps me put this to together, prepare this year. Um, you can see the the numbers about the same as the the percentage change. And once again, twenty twenty was a a unique and challenging year. And with that, I will uh go ahead and answer any questions you have. I'm gonna go ahead and hit the stop share so I can see you, but I can always uh go back to the slide if need be.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Uh, as always, illuminating and helpful and um. This was a different presentation that we had in previous years because of circumstances. Um, but we really appreciate it, and of course, very much appreciate the hard work you do. And everyone on on the force uh does as well. Uh, anyone from the council have questions? I see Councilmember Gabe Paulson has his hand up.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, Chief Norton, thank you so much, and I I just wanna. Um, also uh echo just the fact that we had zero homicides and, you know, a lot of public safety and that no officer. You know, got uh COVID on the job. I I I really think that speaks for your management, and I really appreciate that. Um, I had a couple of questions. One, and this is, you know, I'm I'm, you know, seeing the big picture is that. Twenty twenty really, um, you know, reflected COVID conditions, you know, almost every crime statistic you could kind of extrapolate from what was going on with COVID. Um, to go a little further, two things that that really were on my mind was, you know, when we were handing out masks. And trying to, you know, increase the public safety message, which seemed to be, you know, you know, the overlap between public health and policing. Um, I didn't really see that reflected in the statistic. It might have been, you know, some of the calls or or meetings or, you know, some of the other categories, but. If you could maybe just qualitatively say a little bit more about how that went and any lessons learned. Uh, and then my second question is sort of around technology. So the uh, you know, Larkspur City had tried to adopt during COVID different ways. Of of, you know, dealing with the library and doing dealing with planning permits and so forth. I'm wondering to what extent. You know, you um took advantage of of shelter in place and, you know, the downtime in traffic and other things to to upgrade technologies that that might, you know, uh, increase efficiencies.
Yeah, so we we definitely have some downtime in traffic, but um our calls for service were still. Quite high in time, and the ones we had were time consuming, I guess, as you can kind of see from the reports, but we did do some, we changed a few things that we're gonna. Continue and see how it goes. Uh, one of the big things was getting our online reporting up and running, and it's still in infancy, but a lot of people are taking advantage of that. Now something I've been wanting to get going for a few years. Um, it's, you know, like all your city departments, it's hard to take on new projects when you're kind of keeping your head above water with just the day to day stuff. Um, but that is up and running, and we even have a a kiosk in our station should someone walk in, and then at that point decide they want to do it or not have. You know, internet capabilities or not be able to go to the the Lark um, the library. Um, in addition, um, you know, we used to, everything we did was we sent an awesome, we sent an officer. And uh we started handling a lot more things by telephone call if the people were comfortable with it, and most people preferred it because of COVID. And uh we were able to be a lot more efficient that way, because it's just like, takes a long time to drive around and go knock on people's doors. So I think, you know, going forward, we're gonna try and take some of the lower level crime reports that way if they would like that. And we're also offering them the the online option as well. So technology wise, I think those are the two that jump out at me. And I'll just um, just to clarify your questions about the masks, are you, are you talking about enforcement and education? Are you talking about? Just, is that, is that what you were asking about?
Yeah, I, you know, um, I I was thinking generally, so definitely enforcement and education, I think. Uh, you know, our city manager got several thousand masks and and gave a lot of the police department. So for several city meetings, I was just wondering how that was going, you know, going that.
It went good, yeah. Um, you know, it's obviously on the the downside of it now, but we had um our officers all had them in their car, and that was really part of our education was when we saw people. Um, without a mask, we would stop them and go, hey, you gotta wear a mask, and good news, I happen to have one right here. Here you go. And usually they pull one out of their pocket and say, I'm good, but um we did give a lot of those out, and um we did that for several months. And um we did have a few instances where we had to write a few tickets and um, and I, you know, I worked through the departments and the city managers in our towns with some of our hotspots where. We were getting sent out there ten fifteen times a day to some of our parks and some of our schools with some repeat issues. And it became clear that education wasn't really enough. We did do some enforcement. And those numbers aren't broken out separately, but they are under those municipal calls for service I told you about. Um, because the mask wearing was not like a a state penal code. It was a local county ordinance, so that's where those would have been, would have been captured as well.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Catherine Way.
Hi, hi, Chief. I think you're froze, your screen is frozen, or is it just my? Is it just my uh sight? But you look frozen there, Mike, so, oh, there you go.
But it was a good look.
It was. Uh, two questions. Uh, first, catalytic catalytic converters were a huge um. Uh, theft that had been going on for a while, and I noticed uh uh the sheriff busted a ring uh somewhere up at the north part of Nevada or something similar to that. Are we still having a lot of catalytic converters stolen? And then the second question is, I know we've had a few retirements this year. How's um the recruitment and recruitment cycle going?
Okay, so yeah, we actually made a lot of arrests on catalytic converters, and one thing we saw with um. And I won't get too far into this, but one thing we saw that was unique in twenty twenty is. Generally, the the vast majority of the arrests we we were making were for people out of the county and out of our towns. And during twenty twenty, the vast majority of their arrests we made were people who were local. So I'm not sure, you know, it kind of. You know, whatever reason, everything just became localized. It was kind of old fashioned again from when I first started here. Um, the one thing that was kind of unique, though, was catalytic converters. Um, we made several arrests, and I think in one instance, we arrested three people. Two or three times during twenty twenty for for catalytic converters. What we were running into with commercial burglaries, residential burglaries and like catalytic converter thefts. Is it became very clear the. is it became very clear the, there was a little bit of like a safe time for a few months and then we started arresting people. And um, and what was happening, not just in Marin County and not just in California, but probably around the country, but definitely in California is we would arrest someone and and book them into jail, but due to COVID restrictions and all of that, um, the judges had set a um, a no bail required policy. So people were in jail for about thirty minutes. And we did have a couple of instances where they um, at least one I can think of where we arrested someone from a commercial burglary in San Anselmo. And they committed a residential burglary like two hours later in San Rafael. So it was kind of like whack a mole, for lack of a better term, where we're just kind of seeing the same people pop up and we kept arresting them. And um, and not so much for a real serious crime, but we we did have um, some instances at Corte Madera Town Center where we had to arrest the same subjects, you know, double-digit times last year for some minor offenses like trespassing and public defecation and things like that. But um, there was just, the uh, the psychiatric holds weren't being held as long because I think, you know, spacing and COVID, um, the jails weren't able to hold people as long because of the restrictions from the ju- justice system. And even courts for, you know, several months were just processing very minimal arrests and nails pace. So um, sorry, that was kind of a tangent on your catalytic converters, but that played a huge role. Is we, we would catch people and once they got arrested the first time and realized what was going on, there wasn't a huge deterrent to not, not go out again. Um, I think one of the nice things about that, at least for us, was people were less likely to run or fight with us because they realized it wasn't that big a deal to get arrested during two thousand and twenty. Um, and I'm sorry, what was your second question?
I just know you had a few retirements this year and how, wondering how recruitments are coming.
Um, they're coming, they're, you know, they've been dropping off every year for many years and they're pretty low right now. But the people, uh, you know, for for some reasons, we don't have to get into it, but I, you know, I think there's a, we're in the news a lot right now as a profession. And I think it's going to be harder and harder to get people who want to do this. But I will say the people that are applying, um, they're not really doing it just for a paycheck. Because I think we're, that's, our profession isn't really that right now. You have to really want, want to do it. And they seem to be really um, wanting to do it for the right reasons. So as of now, we're, we're able to keep our head above water, but it does seem to be drying up more and more. Um, you know, just to give you a good example, you know, probably the most I ever saw was during the recession in two thousand and eight when we had one opening and we required someone to have already been to the police academy on their own. And we had over a hundred people apply for that. Whereas now, um, I think we have, you know, two to four openings and I think we had five people apply. And none of them have been to the academy, so we'll have to put them through. So it's, it's considerably less of that. And that's, that's nothing that's probably, it's happening across the whole nation right now, but it's, it's specifically hitting, you know, Marin County hard just because of the cost of living hasn't really, if anything, it's probably gone up during this pandemic and not down, so that hasn't helped. But, well, we're doing okay.
Thanks for that. Any other comments or questions from the council? Uh, council member Scott Kandel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Michael, thanks for that report. Uh, my, my question's at a little different angle here. Um, you have, I think you said fifty employees. Uh, I was wondering, out of those fifty employees, how many do you have that are mental health professionals, psychiatrists, psychologists? And and what type of training is there? I mean, if you have a domestic violence, a suicide, someone who's suicidal, someone who's overdosing on drugs, they require very different expertise than somebody who's running from a bank robbery. You know, and I'm, I'm trying to understand if it, do you have specialists that are called out for different types of situations? Is that something moving forward with all the, you know, they say defund the police. I think what what people really mean is 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 have more specialties other than, you know, uh, standard police training to deal with unique situations that don't necessarily require force.
Yeah, I would say since nineteen eighty, um, police profession has kind of been the the catch-all or dumping ground for all of the problems that society faces. Um, and that probably started in the the seventies or I don't know if it was the seventies or eighties when uh, the state mental hospitals closed. And when they closed, they just pushed everyone out onto the streets. Um, and then you kind of see it again with a rise in homelessness around the country and the nation. It's, you know, it's generally not homeless outreach professionals going out there. It's, you know, we'll send the police. And I think it's interesting with what's going on nationally, um, and the conversations we're having about it. We do have, um, you know, due to COVID, I, we do have a significant amount of officers that have not had the forty-hour training. But we go to a specific, we were, I think Marin County was the first in the nation to do this. But back in, you know, two thousand and two, about a year into my profession, we started sending um all our officers to crisis intervention training. It's forty-hour training that's basically, you know, a forty-hour block on mental health and homelessness and how to talk to people. And a lot of it was guest speakers, people who are formerly homeless, people who'd been put on fifty-one fifty holes, people who had, you know, been suicidal and been talked down off a bridge and things like that. It was really good and that still goes on and it's starting to spool back up again since um, the vaccines are out there and we're able to do it. And um, I'm hoping by the end of the year, we'll get all our, all our officers trained in that again. And that's not required by state law or anything, that's just something we do. And I think most of the agencies in Marin County strive to get all their people through it. We do have a standalone team, crisis intervention team, which is our people that are specifically interested in it. They're not trained psychologists or psychiatrists, they are police officers that do this, just like we have a trained homeless outreach um, component of our department where I have five officers that really, you know, want to help the homeless and get involved and get to know them. And we tend to use them more than just your basic beat officer when we can. Um, in terms of county resources, there is a um. Name's escaping me right now, but it's a, it's an on-call um, mental health civilian team that we try to use as much as possible. They're not available twenty-four seven, unfortunately, they have just expanded their hours. It's mobile, mobile crisis unit, I believe is the technical term. Um, but we always call them for anything. We call them for anything um, kind of low level where someone's not obviously being a danger to, to anyone um, other than themselves. Sometimes they ask for us to assist them, sometimes they say, you know what, why don't you handle that one instead? But um, that is a program and I believe they are in the process of trying to expand to a a larger role. I saw the city manager jump on, maybe you wanted to chime in on that.
Yeah, I did, uh, thanks, Mike. I I wanted to acknowledge that the county is taking the lead in uh, forming a task force that will include uh, management uh, and police uh, chiefs that are going to be looking at how to redirect some of our resources into reformatting the mobile crisis team, which is what Chief Norton was referring to. Uh, so that it can be part of the response when law enforcement calls upon it. Um, also the training that Chief Norton mentioned, uh, the Marin Managers Association is discussing setting uh, goals in terms of timelines for getting percentages of our staff trained to uh, trained again. As Chief Norton said, our organization needs to be one of the leaders in having folks trained in that type of response. But we've had so much turnover that we haven't quite been able to to get our numbers where they need to be. And the other agencies are reporting the same thing. So what we now want to do is create an uh, formal policy about how long we want officers to be on the force before they've received that training.
Mike, I'm sorry, just a, a follow-up question. Um, for for your opinion and your perspective, uh, if you had the budget, do, would you want um, people on staff that had professional training in certain areas like psychologists? Or I mean, I I know forty hours of training, they go through a training course, but that is far from making somebody an expert, you know, in handling unique situations. If you had your preference, would you have that type of a, of a team on staff that could respond? Or would you prefer having it be an outside uh, kind of task force crisis team that you would call in and say, hey, maybe we'll meet you at the scene or, I I mean, what, if you, if if we're talking about, I don't want to say rebuilding, but just analyzing, you know, policing, what is your vision of the best way, knowing what you know, uh, to staff a a police force so that it can handle the diversity of of calls that are now, now fall under your umbrella?
I think exactly what the county is looking at is the best model, which is a task force. And obviously in a, in a perfect world, they'd be available twenty-four seven. Um, the problem's going to be, you're going to have three mental health calls at once on a Friday night or seven in the county. So um, I think there'll always be a need for law enforcement to either be there as a backup or initially secure the scene. And we do that now on a lot of medical calls, you know, medical calls where someone's, you know, accidentally shot themselves. That's a good, you know, it's not necessarily suicide, they're cleaning their gun and they shot themselves. The fire department will wait till we go in and just make sure everything looks okay and then they come in. And um, you know, that might be some of these mental health calls or it might be the medical professionals going first and, and we're there shouldn't, you know, should it go sideways or what have you? But um, our county's really small. Um, it's like two hundred and fifty-seven thousand people or something. It's the size of a decent city in Southern California. I think um, having a few professionals available for the whole county would definitely get the job done and be what we need. But Central Marin Police with thirty-five thousand and the amount of mental health calls we have, most of them go real smooth. I'll be honest with you, it's just, you know, people, it's, it's, it's sad, but people of all ages get depressed and they keep hurting themselves and most of the times it's uh, we're called pretty early while they're just kind of thinking about it. They're not sitting there holding a knife or holding a gun and sometimes it happens, but for the most part it's not. Um, but yeah, I think the way that the county is looking at this makes the most sense to me. And um, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that it took a lot of the events that happened last year to get to this point. But, you know, this probably should have happened when they closed the mental health hospitals forty years ago, right? I mean, what, what do people think was going to happen, you know? It's easy to second guess, but uh, it's kind of a long time coming, so I think it'll be good. I don't think we'll be entirely out of it because we definitely have a role to play in these calls. I don't think it'll really open up any free time for us, but I love the idea of being able to hand that off. And you know, for what it's worth, I was our uh, league crisis negotiator for like ten years. And um, you know, I got some, a few stories um, where I was able to talk people down. But, you know, having gone through that, I'm not a psychologist, but once you get a little experience with anything, you definitely are better than the brand-new person, so. Or what.
Hey, thank you, appreciate that answer, appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief. Any other comments or questions? I see Vice Mayor Dan Hillmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a quick uh, acknowledgement. All of our neighborhoods have uh, neighborhood response group activities going on that are. We have um, regular meetings to discuss how we can best adapt to these changing circumstances, some of which have to do with not just evacuations and and fire and earthquake uh, response, but it has to do with some of these issues you're talking about where one of your neighbors uh, is having trouble uh, during the pandemic, whether it's with depression or or other issues. And I've seen this taking place in my neighborhood and I want to uh, congratulate and commend the Central Marin Police for how they've integrated their response with the county's uh, crisis team. I've seen this in action on my block. Um, and it, it helps, in in this particular case, oh, oh, one of my neighbors was having trouble. And uh, an organized response was coordinated by the city with the county, with Central Marin Police. And they're continuing to help uh, one of my neighbors and it allowed them to stay in their home uh, and cope with some of these terrible mental stresses that the pandemic has put on them. So these are just not um, homeless people. These are not just people that you see on the street having acute mental health issues. These are your neighbors. These are many of the people in the city uh, that are under uh, you know, year, months of of this stress. So please keep your eye out, offer a helping hand. Uh, I'm helping care for a couple of my elderly neighbors now who have uh, one way or another uh, been hurt or or ill. And so uh, look for ways to help. It's more than just the police department, it's the neighborhood coming together and using the resources that we have at the city. So, thanks, Mike, thanks, all your officers. It's been a wonderful thing to experience seeing um, good-hearted people come together and help.
Yeah, you know, the big thing is, the reason police get called to mental health in the first place is um, along with doctors, we're one of the few people that have the ability to put someone on a mental health hold. But that's a pretty high threshold. You have to basically be unable to care for yourself, be um, a danger yourself or a danger to someone else based on a mental health issue. And then you get, you know, brought to a mental health facility. But um, most people are there for less than eight hours probably and then they're released. They're not cured in eight hours, you know, maybe they were given some medication, but we, we end up contacting the same people a lot because of that. And frankly, it's not a slide on our, our county mental health system. It's just how the whole thing is kind of set up, unfortunately. And a lot of calls we go on, people clearly have mental health issues, but if they don't reach that high threshold, we can't, you know, against their will, take them away up there. And that's done with good, good reason, right? You know, if I'm having a bad day, I don't necessarily want to be taken to the mental health facility. Um, but it, it's kind of like uh, what Vice Mayor was saying. It's um, it's usually kind of, it's going to go on for a long time and they need the help. And um, that's where that mobile crisis, I think, has been the most value. It's not, oh, someone's, you know, threatening to take a bunch of pills. We need mobile crisis to come there and and do this for us. No, we, we can probably handle that. It's, it's maybe um, an, an older resident of our town that um, you know, is what we would call a a hoarder or something like that. Or, you know, and they just aren't even going to the supermarket anymore and things like that. If we put them on a hold, you know, that will get them a meal, but they'll probably be released in eight hours. But it's a much longer process and that's where mobile crisis is a really good starting point for that. And I would say one of the big values of the forty-hour CIT is not that it makes you a psychiatrist. They teach you how to not be afraid to put holds on people and know exactly what it is and be comfortable doing it. So you don't let someone like that slip through the cracks if they're at that threshold. And also they give you all the resources in the county that you can use to help solve some of these problems, you know, and point people in the right direction.
Well, and reducing the fear on the part of the individual who is the subject. Right. Is is really important. I mean, these people have, I have to live past the day where they're experiencing contact with Central Marin or Crisis Unit. And they need to be uh, feel so that they can uh, continue the relationships with their neighbors and the town. So it's really important and I just can't thank you enough for how thoughtful my experience has been watching your officers uh, deal with these things in my, in my, on my street. So thanks.
That's good to hear, thank you. And I think those sentiments are shared by all of us on the council. Um, uh, any other comments or questions from the council? Uh, Allison, do we have any, anyone from the public?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any emails, public comments? And there is no public comment.
Okay, good. Well, then I think we'll wrap this item up and thank you again, Mike, um, for your good work and for the good work of the entire um, authority. We, we appreciate and value your service so much. Um, it's hard, it's hard to articulate frankly, because it's so important to us all. So thank you for spending the time with us tonight. Uh, and with that, we'll close the uh, three point two and go to three point three and we've got an update on the Bonner Bridge.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. Um, a short presentation here uh, on our update on the bridge project. Um, as you recall, we come to you every six months or so and give you an update on our uh, four-year bridge project. Let you know how things are uh, progressing. Um, so going back to our uh, first slide here is just a recap of where we started um, three years ago. Um, the contract was awarded to Golden State Bridge out of Benicia.
Julian, I'm not seeing the slides, do we?
Oh, okay. Hold on one second. I think I skipped a step there.
There we go.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, okay, this is just a summary of um, the contract information, Golden State Bridge out of Benicia, um, a four-year contract. Uh, just under twenty-seven million dollars and the work started in May of two thousand and eighteen. Um, this is our, kind of our tracking uh, sheet that we uh, present to you every six months to show you where we're at. It's a snapshot of um, schedule and costs. Um, and so the first um, column is the items and then the first set of numbers is uh, where we're at today. Then the total project and then a percentage tracking at the end. So uh, we're about seventy percent. we're about seventy percent of the way through the construction time. And we've got about eighty percent of the work completed. That's the working days and the construction costs tracking. So that's good. It means we're progressing ahead of schedule, although you wouldn't think it if you looked out there today, but we'll get to that in a minute. And then change orders is the other item that we track. These are for costs that were not anticipated in the original design. Things that come up through the course of construction that require additional funds to the contractor. And so there's a base set amount of ten percent that's allowed when we award a contract for contingencies. And so far we're eighty percent through and we're only at three percent. So we're tracking good on change orders at the moment. This is kind of a running tally of the work components broken down into the major tasks. And so the strike through here in the first column is everything that's been completed to date. And so you see, we only have three major tasks left. Constructing the south side bridge deck. And then a closure pour which will bring the two sides of the bridge together and the finish work, which includes all the railings and the sidewalks and then ultimately a project completion. So going back some photos over the last year, this is where we were about a year ago. We are looking at this from the hospital side of the bridge. The working trestle is on the left. The middle is what was left of the old bridge. And then on the right side is the completed north side of the new bridge. And then in April of last year, we started demolition of the old bridge you see here in between the trestle and the new bridge. And then it continued until we were just left to the old piers that were sticking up from the creek and they're all cut down to two feet below the mud line. So they don't become a hazard for people using the creek in the future. Once we had the old bridge demolished, we started installing cofferdams. So these are sheet piles that are installed in the water so that we can then pump out the water and we can work in the dry when we're drilling down into the creek bed for the CIDH piles, which is a cast-in drilled hole. These are eight-foot diameter concrete piles for the bridge. They go down about a hundred feet or so. They're anchored twenty feet into the bedrock below the creek. And here is the rebar cage being lowered into one of those shafts by the crane. And here's an overhead shot. Once the piles have been installed down into the creek, you see the trestle on the left and the little finger trestles, we call them, that kind of reach out and straddle each side of the diagonal components you see here are called the bent caps. So these are the concrete members that sit on top of the piles that then will support the girders that support the bridge. Here's a close-up of that construction. So that's kind of the math last major task that occurred was constructing these bent caps for the girders to sit on on the south side of the bridge. You see all the purple rebar. That's for corrosion reasons because it's in a saltwater environment. That the rebar is purple. And then there's concrete that's cast around them. And then you can see kind of the corrugated metal sheets around them. That's, those are the sheet pile cofferdams that keep that area dry. So we can work in it and cast the concrete. So here's pretty much where we are today. And so you can see this is looking from the Magnolia side out towards South Aliso, New Bridge on the left. You can see the diagonal bent caps are there in the creek. So the next construction activity is now to lay the girders on top of those bent caps. But one of the reasons we, you don't see a lot of work out there at the moment is because of these environmental work restrictions that were a result of the permitting process and environmental document. And one of the reasons that's driving this to be a four-year project is we have these slowdowns when we have permit restrictions on certain types of work. The one that's affecting us at the moment is that we cannot do any work in the creek until June fifteenth. And so as you see that the next work task is to put the girders on top of the bent caps, we can't do that yet because the sheet piles need to be taken out of the water. And once the girders go on top of these bent caps, you can no longer have access to pull the sheet piles out. So that's why we're at a slowdown. Now there's pretty much just housekeeping going on out there. You'll see some work out at South Aliso and Bon Air on some of the drainage systems, but the actual bridge work is effectively shut down until June fifteenth. Because of, because they cannot get, do any work in the water. And this is not a new condition. This was known at the time the contract was awarded. That's why it was given four years to complete the work. So the next thing you'll see after June fifteenth, they'll go in and they'll lift those sheet piles out and then they'll be able to land the girders on top of the bent caps. This is a photo from that operation from two years ago when they did it on the north side of the bridge. So you can see the, the workers in the foreground are standing on one of those diagonal bent caps. There's a couple of cranes there that are hoisting the precast concrete girder. And it basically spans from bent cap to bent cap. There's four bent caps in the creek and then the two abutments at each side. So there's five spans and there's four girders that go across. So twenty of these girders have to get set. And then once they're set, then they start working on the bridge deck on top of the girders. And so this is one of the operations that does require us to close down the bridge, much as we did when we did the operation on the north side, because these girders are so heavy and they're being lifted by cranes, it's not safe to have vehicles going across the bridge during this operation. So the vehicle, vehicles will be prohibited from using the bridge twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, basically, starting on July twelfth. So we'll be doing a lot of messaging as we get closer to that to make sure that all of our partners are aware of that and make plans for alternate routes during that one week closure. The, because we're doing this on the south side of the existing walkways on the north side. And so we plan to keep the north side walkway open for pads and bicycles during the closure. We just need to close it to vehicles. And what we'll do is the moment they actually pick up a girder and it's moving, they will haul pedestrians and bikes on either side of the bridge. And they won't be permitted to be anywhere near the girder when it's up in the air and being moved. So we'll keep it open to pedestrians and bicycles, but it will be subject to five-minute delays when they're moving these girders around for safety reasons. So here's a snapshot of what happens after the girders are in. There's a lot of framing and form work that goes up so they can pour the concrete slab on top. This is obviously a picture of when they did the north side of the bridge. They'll do the same operation on the, on the south side. And then, as I mentioned, they'll work towards a closure pour, which is joining the two halves of the bridge together, finishing all the railings and the sidewalk. And that'll take us through the winter, the end of this calendar year. And then you'll see a lot more of the finish work and some of the landscaping and things like that will occur in spring of next year. So hey, flip back to the schedule. We're about a year and a bit away from completion. The actual contract completion date is June of next year. The bridge will probably be substantially complete by the end of this calendar year, except for a lot of these ancillary items like railings and sidewalks. So we won't fully open up the bridge until it's safe to do so. So it may look like it's finished by the end of this calendar year, but there will still be parts of the work that need to be completed. And we'll obviously open it up as soon as it's safe to do so. I did want to quickly highlight some of the mitigation projects that were a result of the environmental process and the permitting that we went through on the bridge. These have been in the works for some time and we're finalizing the design and the documents now and working through the Caltrans process to get these out to bid. These are included in the highway bridge program. So the bulk of these project works is paid for by Caltrans, similar to the bridge. There's five separate mitigation projects associated with the bridge. One is Magnolia Stormwater Improvement. And then we will be restoring a tidal marsh where the existing dog park is and then building a new dog park to replace that south of the police station. And then there's two dock, public dock improvements. So starting with the tidal marsh, we will be reconstructing a tidal marsh and connecting it to the creek, essentially where the dog park is today, and it'll expand out and reach the creek and it will be planted with with plants that are not, that are, sorry, native plants upland and in the marsh that are suitable for that habitat. And then because we're removing the old dog park, we're going to be building a new one, kind of at the tail end of the yellow highlighted area that you see here. And then there will be some ADA upgrades in the parking lot, too. And then the two docks, these are both public docks. There's a public dock next to the Marin Rowing Club's dock. It's currently closed because it's in a state of disrepair. So this project will create an ADA access to that dock as well as replace the dock with a new floating ADA accessible dock. Similarly, at Bon Air Landing Park, the public dock that's there will be replaced. And also the access from the street down to the dock will be completely reconstructed. So it's also ADA compliant. And then the last of the mitigation projects is the Magnolia Stormwater. This is one of the projects that's probably morphed the most since the beginning of the bridge project. We've done some more detail analysis and design of what's required to offset the pervious, impervious area of the bridge, which is what this project proposes to do, is treat stormwater to compensate for the imperviousness of the bridge. And it's not feasible to install capture devices and clean the water that lands on the bridge. So as a mitigation, we're going to be widening the ditch that runs along Magnolia between Doherty and Creekside, widening that ditch and giving it a profile such that it almost acts like detention. Unplanting the ditch so that when the stormwater goes through it, the water has a chance to get cleaned by the plantings that are in the ditch. And then we end up with cleaner water going out to the creek. There were some other components to this project, including the lane diet on Magnolia and also some infiltration chambers. But when we crunched through all the numbers and did the final design, it was determined that just widening out this ditch was enough compensation for the area on the bridge. So we don't have to do those other costly improvements as part of this project. So that's a quick ten-minute, I think, update on the, on the bridge. I'm available for any questions that anybody may have.
Great. Thanks, Julian. Any questions or comments from the council?
I have one, Kevin.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Council member Catherine Way.
Julian, could you just go back to that ditch widening as a mitigation? I know I guess my question is, I, I think originally, if I, my memory suits me well, it was an area near Hillview that we were going to work on. And one reason why was not only for the mitigation for the hardscape on the bridge, but also because of the high level of water that comes off of the the sky, the sky views, Skyview, Skylark area that rushes down there onto Magnolia and then near Hillview. Has, it looks like the area of the project is now changed. What about that issue with the water that comes off of Skylark?
Yeah, so that portion of the project has been deleted. It was to be an infiltration chamber that was going to intercept the water coming down off the Skylark Hill and give it a chance to percolate into the ground versus having it run off and go directly into the creek. And it was basically dropped because it was one of the more expensive ways to treat the stormwater and it's a lot more cost effective to widen the ditch out to compensate for that. And so what we've done to address the other impact of not putting in the infiltration chamber is we've actually, the Hillview Storm Drain Project is out to bid now and it has been designed to separate the drainage that comes down from Hillview from the drainage in Hillview that's going to the pump station. So we've essentially set it up so that the water that was coming down through Hillview would go from Skylark into Hillview and come up through the catch basins in Hillview is now being separated. And so there's no need to detain it or retain it because it'll basically bypass the subdivision and go directly to the creek. And then the drainage within the creek is, I'm sorry, within the Hillview subdivision is now being tied together and it goes to the new pump station that was constructed with the bridge. So rather than treat and detain the Skylark, we've chosen to divert it.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. My second question is, I, I spend a lot of time now with a new puppy at the Quarter Madera Dog Park, which is relatively new. Turf was destroyed pretty much right away, especially over the winter time. Is there methods in which on our sloped area where the dog park is going to be that better drainage can happen so that the turf is not destroyed within six months?
Yeah, so it's, it's basically going to get recontoured and we have and replanted. So we're not just putting up a fence and fencing off an area. It's going to be completely reconstructed as a brand-new dog park with proper drainage and irrigation and the right kind of grass and everything like that from scratch.
Good. Thank you. That's all.
Thanks for that. Any other comments or questions from the council? I'm sorry, I'm seeing council member.
Um, yeah, Julian, just a minor question. On the closure, I think you said July twelfth. Is, is there, obviously, if we have emergency services, they, they can still get across the bridge, right? Because I'm just thinking about fire season and generally the summer, you know, what that'll do to, you know, to circulation for that period. And also, how long will it be closed?
Yeah, so we did actually go back and forth with this and we did talk with emergency services before we did the first closure and it was determined that the best course of action was just to close it completely. There was an option to close it to traffic, but have the ability to pull fences to let an emergency vehicle through if need be. But we could not guarantee that if a fire truck or other emergency vehicle showed up, that we wouldn't be at a stage of the work where there was big equipment or a girder blocking the road. And so the decision was made, it's better that they know as soon as they get a call that they have to go a certain way and not have to worry about, do they get to the bridge? And what happens if we have a girder landed on where they would need to drive and they have to turn around? So we'll certainly have those conversations again to make sure that you know, what we did last time worked out the best, but that was something that was vetted with emergency services last time. And, and their preference was, we'd rather it just be closed and we know it will be closed and we can plan around that. And the closure is projected to take a whole week. I believe it's to start at six AM on a Monday and go to six PM on the following Sunday. If they finish sooner, they'll open it up. And it will be closed twenty-four seven. We're going to close it off so nobody thinks they can get through. We don't want to be moving barricades at the end of every day and letting people through. We'd rather have a hard closure and people just get used to not being able to go through for the week.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Thanks, Julian.
Yeah, thank, thank, thanks, Julian. Julian, just one, one quick question on the modifications on the on the, the mitigation near Hillview. I, I assume that that's all been vetted through the regional board because I think that was something that they were looking for initially. Are they, are they okay with the modifications that have been made?
Yeah, they had to sign off. We had to redo the technical analysis and show that we were able to provide the needed water treatment in the ditch. And so that was all recalculated, re-engineered and submitted to the board and signed off on.
Okay, so they're, they're fine. Okay, I just wanted to check on that. Good. Thank you. Thank you for that. Anything else? Anything from the public, Allison? See any hands?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any email public comments? And there is no public comment.
Okay. In that case, we'll wrap up agenda item number three. Thanks very much, Julian. And I think the next agenda item is approval of the consent calendar. And are there any members of the council who would like to remove any item that's currently included on the consent calendar for separate discussion and consideration? Seeing none, any? Seeing none, um, anyone from the public who would like to pull an item?
Looking for any requests from our public. And there is no public comment.
Okay, on that case, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Say that up.
Too slow.
Too slow. All right. Do we need a roll call?
Member. Yes, Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Thanks, Mayor Helmer.
Yes.
Mayor Hora.
Yes. So the motion is approved. Thank you all. And we'll move on to item number five, which is our city manager's oral report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, I have two items I wanted to highlight for the council. The first is that um, we have two vacancies on commit city committees and we are hoping members of the public will be interested in volunteering their time to participate. One of the vacancies is on the Larkspur Library Board and the other vacancy is on the Measure B Citizens Oversight Committee. If you go to our website on the homepage, in the news items, you'll find a link that will take you to uh, the information about these vacancies and the application. And um we hope to see folks turning in those applications as soon as possible. They are due on May twenty-seventh. And the council is tentatively scheduled to conduct its interviews on June second. The other thing I wanted to um make sure the public is aware, the council is aware that we uh have now completed two public workshops about potential improvements that we'll be doing to the downtown corridor, particularly with respect to accessibility. Uh, but in addition, we uh asked the public for feedback about the parklets that have been allowed under emergency provisions in our downtown. And whether folks uh would like to see them stay into the future. And if so, what those um what those parklets might uh look like and whether what we have is what people would like to see going forward. So um, we have decided that given we're in budget season and we have some long meetings coming up with a heavy emphasis on the budget, that this topic merits its own council meeting and the council has scheduled a special meeting uh that'll be done virtually on Zoom. It will be at seven PM on May, Monday, May twenty-four. And the links to that uh meeting will be on our website in the next day or two. So, or the information will be up in the next day or two. Uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you and Councilmember.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much, Dan. Uh, any questions or comments from the council? On the city manager's report? Seeing none, anyone from the public?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any email public comment. And there's no public comment.
Okay, well, uh, tha- thank you for that. And just as a, as a note, I did um join the, the public workshop. I think that was last night. And um seeing some of the design concepts that are being considered are, are interesting and I think of general public interest. So I hope people take advantage of the resources that we have and are considering um for what might be possible in terms of parklets going into the future. Um, let's close that item and open it up to council members' oral reports. Do we have any, um, any reports from any members of the council? And I see Councilmember Paulson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a, a few brief items. Um, I just wanted to emphasize, you know, what the Marin municipal water district was saying about the drought and with fire safety. So um, May first was a wildfire community preparedness day and we continue to meet with the NRGs, all forty-two of them. The meetings are well attended. We usually have uh um, you know, Chief Martin and Todd Lando and um Mark Brown, the executive uh director of the Marin Wildfire Prevention Agency. The, the only comment I wanted to make on this point is, you know, for public messaging, we know this is going to be a very risky and unusual summer. And um, just for the public and perhaps, you know, the city uh can, can also use our website and communicate courses to really get people to prepare themselves. And, you know, one of the great resources is the um, you know, the Marin uh what fire, fire safe Marin site. They have a, you know, five step way for everybody to prepare. And I, I really want to underscore and we'll probably repeat this next month again that you know, we still have a little time, you know, before things get really hot and windy. So, so I really want to encourage everyone to keep that, you know, at the top of their minds as well as water conservation. Um, and then two more minor things. The second is I did meet with the mobile home park community on the twenty-ninth and uh we've decided to continue to meet to really understand their long-term strategies. I think I, you know, sort of recalibrated where we are for twenty-twenty-one and moving forward and what their concerns are. And I, I don't have anything specific to report. We, you know, decided to get more information on both sides and, and I will report back, you know, as soon as we meet again in uh, in May. Uh, and then lastly, I'm another resource that, that I wanted to bring to people's attentions regarding youth and, you know, depression and some of the things that Chief Norton brought up. Uh, I, I'm finding more and more that the Marin Youth Healthy Partnership is a wonderful resource. They have speakers every, every month and, you know, just to let all our parents and kid know, kids know that there's a lot there on mental health and depression and so forth. And again, I'll be working with our former mayor Larry Chu to try to refund that program because their money runs out, uh, I think in twenty-twenty-two. So I, I'm beginning to, you know, really see value in that organization and would highly encourage people to go to uh M-HIP, M-H-Y-P dot org for all sorts of resources and tips and helps for their neighbors and so forth. Uh, and with that, uh, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thanks. I think I saw Councilmember Catherine Way had her hand up.
Yeah, just really quickly, last Thursday, I attended that LAFCO Shared Services Workshop that they had online. I know uh Councilwoman Paulson was there also. It was from nine to twelve last Thursday and there were some, I thought, very good information, particularly about what they're doing in Southern Marin for um, for uh merging of some of their fire departments or discussing merging some of their fire departments. So I got an email today that it's actually been recorded and it's available to live to stream. So if anybody's interested in that, it'll be on their LAFCO website. Um, it was also nice to hear such positive things we said um from Manager Kusamano when he referred to the process we've done um within the Twin Cities for creating Central Marin Fire and also uh Central Marin Police Authority as real key examples of shared services and collaboration. So if you're interested in that, or anybody in the public is, it should be available to watch um online within the next week. That was all.
Okay, thanks for that. Anyone else? Uh, seeing none. Thank you for those reports and I think we'll close that agenda item. Uh, item number seven is public hearings. We have none. So let's go on to uh agenda number uh eight. We've got a couple here and the first one is eight point one, where we're going to start talking about budgets. So if I could turn that over to our city manager to get started.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Councilmembers, this is the beginning of our annual process to prepare and present to the council our budget for the upcoming year. Um, typically in the last few years, we've done it over four meetings. We are condensing it to, we believe, will work in three meetings this time. Uh, we're keeping our tradition the same, though, that the first meeting, as we kick it off, is a sort of a ten thousand foot view of our budget situation. And we like to do a couple of different things. The first part of the presentation tonight, this item is an opportunity for your department heads to uh talk to you about what they've accomplished in the current fiscal year and what they hope to accomplish in the upcoming fiscal year. Um, they'll have a chance, this is a chance, a rare opportunity for you to have a fairly open dialogue with the department heads about what's going on and the challenges that they're facing. So they'll each do a brief uh summary and then open themselves up to questions. Um, after we do that, the uh next part of our process will segue into uh Administrative Service Director Kathy Orms and my assumptions around which we're building the budget. So we'll be focusing particularly on the revenue assumptions we're using to build this year's budget. So you can be aware of what you can expect to see as we go into the more detailed review, which will begin at your next council meeting. Um, I was struck by how attrition and reorganization can really flatten an organization because I think in my first few years of presenting the budget in this format, uh, the management team that spoke to you had about eight people on it. And uh, under our new structures uh of our consolidating departments and our having uh blended some of our departments with other agencies, we're down to four department heads. So you'll be hearing from all four of them today as well as myself about accomplishments and goals this year. I thought it would be prudent or appropriate to uh to do this in reverse alphabetical order, if for no other reason than to have some of our more experienced presenters uh kick us off and then we'll, we'll kind of move down the list. So I'm going to ask Public Works Director Julian Skinner, who you were just hearing from, to come back on camera and he can start to this evening's presentations for us.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see if I can share my screen properly this time.
There you go.
Okay, um, so we have a brief presentation uh for you tonight. As the city manager mentioned, uh, at your next meeting, uh, we'll uh delve in a little bit more uh in-depth into a lot of the capital projects that I'm going to kind of skim over uh tonight, but please feel free to uh ask any questions. Um, so this is a kind of a snapshot of what we do in Public Works. We basically take care of the city's infrastructure and how people uh use our rights of way. Uh, primarily, our uh biggest asset is our streets, thirty-three miles of pavement and that's we don't just look after the pavement. It's a lot of the things uh that you see at the side that are, I said, on all the streetlights, uh, traffic signals, retaining walls, as you see in the photo here. Uh, was an expense we had this last year to replace the retaining wall and then the signs and the striping and, and things like that. And um probably the, the biggest um other than the uh pavement is the uh storm drain, which is the utility that the city owns. Uh, we don't do uh water and sewer, as you all know, but the storm drains are the city's. A lot of underground pipes and structures and very old and we uh completed a storm drain master plan a few years ago and we know we have a lot of needs um in the storm drain category. And then we also look after our parks, the one big regional park, Piper Park, and then the ten mini parks. Um, and then we also uh take care of the nine uh city-owned buildings. Uh, so we're two divisions in Public Works, an engineering and a maintenance. Uh, we both look after the infrastructure. Uh, typically, engineering handles the larger one-time projects um and also deals with private development and how it may impact the city and, and rights of way. Um, and then maintenance is the routine, the annual and the ongoing um operations. So that, you know, the quickest example is if there's a pothole in the street and it needs to be patched, it's a maintenance operation. If a whole street needs to be repaved, it's an engineering uh function. Um, and then we all handle other things uh in addition to our infrastructure. We deal with public surface service requests where people have questions and concerns um about the infrastructure or things that are occurring in city right-of-way. Uh, we handle encroachment permits, uh, which is where we uh allow people to do work. Um, that's typically on private property, but part of it needs to spill over into the right-of-way or they need to access the public street to do their work. We issue encroachment permits for that. Uh, and then we work with building and planning on their uh new project developments that come through. Um, look at them at a, at a city infrastructure level. And then we're also in charge of monitoring ADA in the right-of-way, making sure that uh streets and sidewalks are ADA compliant for people with disabilities. And then we're also in charge of, of clean stormwater. So there's um a lot of mandates out there. Uh, the rainwater typically comes down and it's clean, but as it travels over streets or through fields or private property and it gets to the storm drains, uh, what we're trying to do is uh separate um the trash and other uh things that don't belong in the creek uh from that rainwater so that ultimately uh only the clean water flows through the storm drains and gets to the creeks and we're able to retain or filter out um other impurities in the stormwater. Uh, we also manage a GIS system where we have certain city assets that are mapped. Um, and I'll have a little bit more on that and look into the future uh on another slide. And then we also coordinate with nearby and regional agencies on their projects. We've been working with the county on their Sir Francis Drake project as it impacts uh residents in Larkspur. And then this photo here is uh a recent photo from the North South Greenway project that uh Larkspur and Tam and Corder Madera and the county have all been working on over many years. And this first, uh, this next phase of the project has just kicked off and Caltrans is actually running this project because it's in the right-of-way. Uh, but what you see here is they're going to be building a new uh twelve-foot wide multi-use path uh on the side of the Corder Madera Creek uh Bridge uh for the US one-on-one off-ramp. So we're uh involved with that because it's within our jurisdiction. And uh, the city actually will be taking over the next phase of that when it's adjacent to Old Redwood Highway. Looking at some of the accomplishments for this past fiscal year, um, as we uh highlighted in the earlier presentation, we completed the foundation or the substructure for the Bon Air Road Bridge on the south side. Um, and then as part of the Bon Air Bridge Project, we did complete the new storm drain pump station. So this is a photo of the discharge pipe. So all of the stormwater that falls uh on the south side of Hillview that gets into the new storm drains that are in an upcoming project will be routed to this new storm drain pump station. Um, and then they'll come out of this pipe, which is just north of the Bon Air Bridge. So that pump station was completed and has been up and running and tested. Um, and it's just waiting for us to put the pipes in Hillview. Uh, we finished our second major paving project uh under the ma- uh Measure B paving plan. Uh, about four miles of uh streets were paved. Uh, and as I mentioned before, uh, we had three retaining walls that needed to be constructed. Uh, they're part of the street structure. They're there to either hold the street up or hold a hillside back from falling onto the street. So when we pave a street, uh, we have to address these retaining walls. Um, and then the photo here is the new uh pathway. This is the phase one, about five hundred feet of new pathway that we constructed. Uh, basically widening out the sidewalk um around the perimeter of Redwood High School on Doherty. Uh, and we do have plans to continue that uh path in the future if we can find some uh funding. Um, in addition, a project that had been on the books for quite a while was installing a new uh bypass storm drain. Um, the storm drain is actually in Vila Paz, but it was called the Corder Alejo Storm Drain Project because it replaces some hillside pipes that have a history of uh failure uh that were leading down, draining into Corder Alejo. So um about fifteen hundred feet of new storm drain was installed. Uh, so we don't have to rely on those old hillside pipes um anymore. Uh, the central pathway connector, that's the short uh piece of uh connector path that is connecting uh the Rose Lane subdivision to the central pathway. Um, just uh south of Magnolia, that was uh completed and opened um just after the new year. Um, and then we've also uh negotiated an agreement with the City of Mill Valley for a shared public works inspector. So we've relied on um consultants for uh public works inspections over the years and it's, it's worked well, but we've been uh, as some of the other neighboring agencies have, looking for ways to uh improve service and cut costs. And we think uh this agreement will help us out um in that endeavor. Um, and then the other thing we did this year was we processed the encroachment permits for the in-street um dining uh in response to COVID and restaurants needing expanded uh dining area. Uh, so goals from the, for the upcoming year and a lot of these touch on CIP projects that you'll see a lot more detail on at your meeting at the nineteenth, where we present the capital uh improvement program to you. Um, but Doherty Drive Rule Twenty-A Undergrounding Project is all designed and um ready for a, a few administrative processes uh with PG&E and the CPUC to check some boxes so we can go out and do the construction uh for that, that would underground all of the overhead utilities on Doherty Drive. Uh, our third Measure B project is out to bid as we speak, and so we anticipate um another round of uh five miles or so of street paving uh later this summer. Um, and then also we separated out uh repaving of East Sir Francis uh Drake Boulevard. Uh, the entire one-mile length that's within the city jurisdiction is slated to get paved as part of the Measure B program. Um, and that'll be either later this summer or potentially um early uh next year. Uh, and then the photo here is of the Hillview neighborhood. So as I mentioned before, um, a new storm drain pump station's been installed as part of the Bon Air Bridge and we're going to be installing new storm drains in Hillview uh to alleviate this uh flooding that they're used to um with high tides and rainfall in that neighborhood due to their proximity to the creek. The new uh storm drains will tie into the pump station um so that they don't have this uh flooding occurrence anymore. Um, as city manager mentioned, we've had a couple of workshops for our ADA improvements downtown. As city manager mentioned, we've had a couple of workshops for our ADA improvements downtown and the parklet policy. And so we'll be moving forward with plans to do improvements on two blocks of Magnolia downtown. That's King Toward essentially removing and replacing all of the sidewalks and the street. The street needs to be repaved because it's deteriorated and the sidewalks need to be replaced because they don't meet ADA. And so we've been having public workshops and trying to get some public feedback on what other improvements we may be able to incorporate with that project while we have everything ripped up. And then obviously still a goal of this year is to is to complete substantially complete the Bon Air Bridge and open it up to traffic in early to mid twenty twenty-two. And then, as I mentioned, worked through the Caltrans process to get approval to go out to bid on the five Bon Air Bridge mitigation projects. And then the photo here is something that may actually start before the beginning of the next fiscal year, but we've had some improvements that have been on hold over at Piper Park, but we feel it's time to get these improvements underway. The funding is there. Try and get them in so that they're available for the latter part of the summer for folks to enjoy. And this would be completing the second volleyball court at Piper Park. And then also we're going to add some shade structures and a stage at the picnic area. I mentioned storm drains before. We plan to continue our inspection of our city storm drains. The storm drain master plan did include quite a number of planned improvements and one of the first identified tasks was to do a video inspection of the vast majority of our system to start prioritizing replacement projects. So we're going to undertake that effort. You know, the the replacement of the storm drains ultimately is not something that's funded. At the moment, it's a pretty big price tag, we estimate. You know, probably approaching what we paid to repave all of our streets. So but we're going to do the video inspection to get a better better hand on on how much work we need to do and how quickly we may need to do some of it. You know, storm drains are not quite as obvious to people as paving because they don't see the potholes. But you know, a hole in a storm drain can be as damaging, if not more, than a hole in the pavement. So we definitely want to be in a position where we can start to prioritize and tackle some of those issues. The other new project we're proposing is a replacement of city streetlights with LED fixtures. So this is something a lot of jurisdictions have been doing over time, starting about ten, fifteen years ago. And the technology has advanced quite a bit now, whereas a lot of the earlier concerns with LEDs have been addressed and both for energy savings and cost savings, we feel it's the right time to proceed with a project like this. Corder Madara is a couple of months ahead of us, but we're on the same path looking to replace. We've got about seven hundred and seventy light fixtures in the city. And the with the energy savings and the maintenance cost savings, these bulbs last twenty years as opposed to our normal streetlights last about five years. The money that we spend on replacing these fixtures, we will recoup in less than seven years. And then after the seventh year, then we're saving money on maintenance and energy moving forward. And then the other thing we're looking forward to doing is working with building and planning on the new permitting software and being able to do some realize some streamlining in those processes. And then, as I mentioned before, we're going to be doing some grant applications to try and finish off that Doherty pathway that I showed you. We built the first five hundred feet for. And then the other thing that's going to be coming up is as we get close to the end of our Measure B paving program, we're going out with the the third of probably what will be four big paving projects and then we'll have pretty much a hundred percent of the city will have been paved within the last ten years. And we'll get our PCI rating up, but that's not a, it's not a time to stop and and pause and look at the good conditions of our streets. There's a lot of work and planning that we'll need to go into maintaining the streets in in those conditions. One of the one of the reasons that we, that the voters approved paying for doing all the streets up front in an accelerated fashion was to improve the ride of the streets, get rid of the potholes. But the other incentive is it actually reduces our ongoing maintenance costs. We get the streets all in decent shape, then it costs a lot less money to maintain them in the long run. And so based on the amount of local funding that we anticipate coming in in the future, we're fairly confident that we can keep our streets looking healthy once we've got over this hump with the Measure Measure B money. But that may mean some some seals and some more crack sealing and some other treatments that maybe folks haven't been used to seeing around here. But so we'll be providing more information on that as we get closer to the end of our Measure B program and demonstrating to folks how important it is to invest in a street when it's ten years old. And basically fix some of these issues before they come worse issues. It's kind of an exponential curve. As a street starts to deteriorate, cracks turn into alligators that turn into potholes. And before you know it, your street needs to be reconstructed. So we're definitely going to be looking into a plan to protect the investment that our citizens made in in the streets and reducing our ongoing maintenance costs. This is just a snapshot. You've seen this before of the Measure B paving progress. So basically, when you're looking at this, everything in red and green and blue, for the most part, has been completed. The and and green, the yellow is the yellow and purplish is this summer. And then the orange streets here would be next summer and then we would be finished with Measure B. This is the pie chart that shows all of the streets and the chunks there that we completed in twenty nineteen and twenty. And then the gray chunk that we have out to bid to do this year. So you can see we will have done about three quarters of the streets and then next year we'll just have the last quarter remaining to get through that project. And then looking at the maintenance and their typical activities, you'll see them out in the parks and pathways on the streets and taking care of our median islands and cleaning the storm drains. They also do other tasks such as when we get donation benches and picnic tables and distribute them. And they're our frontline for winter storm response. So they're often here after hours when there's heavy rainfall forecasted. They have their routines. They go out, they clean the cash basins. They know our trouble spots. And they're here to both unclog drains and then also help out with fire and PD if there's any calls for services to make sure that our streets can keep clean. So this last year, two hundred and fifty potholes patched, which is actually less than we were trending before. It's about half. So it stands to reason that we've paved about half of our streets and so our pothole requests have gone down. They also did some painting at City Hall. They helped out and put a lot of the signs out that we saw on public trails, reminding people about masking and keeping social distancing. And then they also deployed the safety measures for our parklets. So some of them have disguised them quite well, but there are traffic-rated, water-filled safety barriers on either side of parklets that are in the street to protect them from vehicles. And then also they have reflective delineators running along the side of them for, because there's not a car there with reflectors on it, just to at nighttime alert a driver to the fact that there's something in that parking space. And then goals for the coming year, continuing to analyze opportunities for work efficiencies. And so a lot of this will be undertaken with what will be the city's next technology investment. That's a CMMS or a computerized maintenance monitoring system. So you see here is a snapshot of some of the data that we already have, which is our storm drain. This is a pipe. This on Tulane. And so we can click on it, identify it. And what you see here is it tells you the size of it and when it was made, but there's a lot more data than that. Such as when it was last inspected and and when it was last videoed and things like that. And so a CMMS system would actually let us expand upon this. And for example, if we have a street sign that is continually being hit, or if we have requests from the public about a certain median or something like that, that is repetitive, it'll allow us to identify those trends. I'd better respond to them and help us do some proactive work on the maintenance side as opposed to reactive. So that's something we're looking forward to implementing in the coming year. So that's a quick run-through of Public Works and where we've been and where we're going. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Julian. Thank you very much. And thank you for everything you do in managing a very complex set of challenges and and issues. And I'm still really liking the nice pavement on the street out in front of my house. We were we were among the first to actually take advantage of of that. So it's it's looking good. Are there any questions or comments from the council? I see Catherine Way, council member.
Hi, hi. Thank you, Julian, for that presentation. Could, I know we don't have a large audience, but there are people who do watch this when on the recording. Can you just tell the public how they can put in a request through the Public Works website if they see an an issue within their neighborhood or other places for either maintenance request or concern they have?
Yeah, so there is, if you go to the city website and you go to the departments and you go to the Public Works page, on the front page, the first page you see under Public Works, there is a widget there for report a concern. And if you click on that, it'll ask you for your contact information so that we're able to get back to you. And then it has a number of categories. And then there's a category for miscellaneous if your specific request doesn't fall in one of the categories that we see most that we have pre-populated. And then also folks can also, we have a general mailbox. It's publicworks@cityoflarksburg.org that they can send requests or concerns to. And it gets it gets tracked at the same way that the requests that come in through the widget do. And one of the advantages of the CMMS that we're looking into is it will integrate all of those requests and help us better identify and catalog those in the future, too.
Okay, good. I see council member Gabe Paulson has his hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Julian, I wanted to, you know, echo the gratitude, you know, for all the projects and you know, I'm particularly pleased to see the CMMS and the LED lighting and some of these innovations which are, you know, really, you know, kind of moving us forward. One of the questions I had was about the storm drains. And, you know, I, if you can maybe clarify, what I saw was inspections and I believe that in the original storm drain plan from twenty nineteen, there was about a half million dollars for, you know, closed caption TV inspections. And then the high priority storm drain projects, I think there was seven million for about six projects. And I'm curious, two things, what the status is on those. I maybe I missed something. And secondly, with the drought, you know, if you see any opportunities to accelerate that work.
So the the inspections, we did start out kind of slowly with some of the equipment we have and got out to some of the the hotspots and did some spot inspections, but we're not set up with the equipment to do the robust inspections that we need to do. And what we've actually been doing is we're talking with Ross Valley Sanitary District to have a pretty sizable pipe network themselves and have all of the equipment. And we've been talking with them about how much their equipment is being used and looking at a shared services opportunity. Rather than hiring a contractor is using some of their personnel and and their equipment and have them do the inspections and the videoing of our storm drains. And then paying them what their, you know, what their costs are, which is less than paying a contractor. So we've kind of been going through that process and haven't been able to to kick off the actual work. But those those negotiations are underway and we're hoping within the next month or two, we'll be able to get rolling on our inspection program with the help of Ross Valley. We do have some pipes that are bigger than Ross Valley typically has. Your storm drains will often get up bigger than sanitary sewers will. So there will be some need for some contractor work on some of our bigger pipes. And as far as the kind of the the hotspot or the priority storm drain improvements, there is one of them where the design is underway and that's on Parkway. That's a storm drain that we know runs under private property and we want to get it into the into the right-of-way. So that work is underway as far as the design goes. And then we're still working on prioritizing a few of the other ones. And really, the 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 video inspection will help us with that prioritization. And yeah, I think it was about seven million, sounds about right for what was identified as a kind of a sooner need rather than a later. And then, you know, I think the whole the whole need looking out over ten years was about twenty million.
Just a quick follow-up, you know, under the optimistic scenario that you get the inspections done, you know, with Ross Valley or any way could work start this year on any of those high priority, you know, projects, including the one in design?
Well, we'll, well, one of the issues we're going to have is we don't have any funding source identified for storm drain repairs at the moment. So it's prudent to identify what the needs are. And part of that analysis will will involve, you know, a risk analysis of you know, if we're looking at a pipe that has significant issues, we certainly don't want to compromise the roadway above and and have a failure. And so I would say if we come across something where it has to be replaced sooner rather than later for public safety, then we'll have to have a conversation about where we could get money for that improvement. As far as improvements beyond something that we identify as an immediate public safety concern, it's going to go on a priority list. And until we can figure out a a funding source, I don't think you would see any of those other big bigger projects move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none. Country, oh, Vice Mayor Dan Hillmore.
Just a a comment, Julian, to keep things on the light side. One of my favorite memories driving through in the desert, going through Winnemucco, Nevada, is seeing the billboard that they used to have up as you entered the town, announcing the town had the identity and their logo was City of Paved Streets.
Maybe we can borrow it.
So I want you to think about when we're acknowledged for all the incredible monumental work you've done on our streets, what sort of slogan we can incorporate. I can think of it, all I can think of now is we're proud of our streets, but I'll look to you for advice.
I think we can plagiarize. Anything else from the council? Any questions from the public?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any emailed public comments. And there is no public comment.
Okay, great. Thank you, Julian. We appreciate you more than you know.
Thank you, and we'll see you again on the nineteenth.
Great, thanks. Okay, Dan, who's 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 next up?
Next, we'll hear from Planning and Building Director Neil Talk. Come on, Dan. Come on, Steve.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have a a PowerPoint, but I'm going to quickly go through kind of where we've been over the last year and our goals for the upcoming year. I think reflecting what Chief Norton said in his presentation earlier tonight, this certainly has been a challenging year. Probably the most challenging I've had in my career as a planner. We, our department in planning and building, we manage planning application reviews, projects as under the guidance of the general plan and compliance with the regulations of the zoning ordinance as well as having to work with a variety of other state mandates and regulatory agencies that are involved in development permitting. Certainly, the majority of our work is you know, typically, single-family residential modifications and development or use permits for, you know, commercial uses and outdoor dining and things like that. But there is, you know, regularly, we're dealing with projects and proposals. We have many discussions regarding the sanitary district site and other projects throughout the city. And I think as you're aware, housing is going to be a has been and will continue to be a key topic in housing regulation and what the city does to do more to promote housing development responsibly within the city. So but after this last year, we did see some significant changes due to the but after this last year, we did see some significant changes due to the impact of COVID-19 emergency in both budget and operations. At the beginning of the fiscal year by July, we had seen the planning and building counter, of course, remained entirely closed to the public with staff, providing services while we've generally enjoyed being a very open city with a lot of interaction with the public. We've been closed and providing services entirely through email, phone, online conferencing, mail and deliveries. And this has in fact worked fairly well. I think we've discovered a lot of things about what we can potentially do and how we can potentially operate in a more efficient manner. But it certainly has been a challenge of, of change. And we've had staff that has worked in staggered shifts and through distant workspaces with a portion of staff working remotely at any given time. We're starting to come together more regular in-office hours as of late. The organizational changes included reductions in staff and consolidation of duties in order to maintain key services despite the anticipated budget shortfall. We did see the retirement of our longtime permit technician Natalie Baumer. She brought with her, took with her a lot of institutional knowledge of the city and processes. Many of her duties were backfilled by our newer permit technician, James Carrigan, and our new assistant planner, Aaron Matthews, who came on last year, just in time to begin training under COVID conditions. We also eliminated a part-time code enforcement consultant position that we had had for the prior two years. And our senior planner Kristin Tyke assumed lead role on code enforcement matters. With the consolidation of the recreation department and library into the community development, community services, the role of processing heritage tree permit applications was transferred to the building department as well. So that's now a process that we're managing and should there be protests or appeals to the city council, those are done within the building, planning and building department. Work on our wreckage retention program and historic resource inventory were largely slowed down during this period. And while current planning activities, the remodels did recede somewhat, the building division remained pretty busy. We processed a little over 1,100 permits in 2020, and that was not far below our 2019 total of 1,200 permits. Some of our major accomplishments were policy updates and some operational accomplishments as well. So we did adopt the 2019 building code and made some alignments between the fire safety code and our resale process, our heritage tree permits, and our regulations on undergrounding utilities. We updated the noise regulations to better accommodate emergency backup generators in order for citizens to have better access to backup generators, given the, you know, the issue, the significance of the PSP power shut offs and potential other emergency shut off events. We further updated the accessory dwelling unit ADU regulations in order to remain compliant with ongoing changes to state regulations and state legislation. And in doing that, we also collaborated with a countywide ADU website and handbook. And that's a kind of an interactive website designed, managed by the county, but very useful for property owners to find resources for information about financing, design, things that we don't necessarily keep on our, our website, which is more focused on our local regulations and processing. We expanded the zoning administrator duties to streamline some projects previously subject to planning commission review. And while this was not a huge game changer, we have had several projects now go through zoning administrator. These are sort of minor second story additions that typically had gone through planning commission that are now being managed by the zoning administrator. And so we have had a few of these and that takes some load off the planning commission agenda work that has to go into that for those types of projects. And we haven't had any that have been challenged or appealed. We've completed the 2015 GHG inventory, working with MCEP, the Marine Climate and Energy Partnership. And we have prepared a draft climate action plan that we presented to the city council earlier in March. And we have held a public workshop on that and comments are still open through the 14th of this month on the draft climate action plan. That's available on our website. And you can certainly, anybody who's listening, you can review that and send me your comments if you have any comments or questions. And we'll be returning to the city council, hopefully for final adoption in June, based on, you know, response and maybe some edits relative to the questions and comments put forward. We also released the draft, draft general plan at the end of last year, and we are completing review and preparation of the EIR at this time. We are working on an EIR that will take into consideration potential growth identified under the draft arena and Plan Bay Area 2050, which is anticipating a more substantial level of growth than we had initially envisioned. And this does not result from changes to density or intensity, but is a potential reflection, or is a reflection of potential adjustments to regulations to reduce some of the constraints that may then allow for more housing development. Which we'll be reviewing and really adopting more defined regulations for under the housing element. And finally, we did issue an RFP and completed selection of a vendor client first to procure new land management software to improve efficiencies within our department and with our work with the public and with other departments. This will offer greater online access for the public and will improve our coordination and workflow with other departments. And I think again, in reflection of the events over last year, we've really come to recognize the need and significance of this type of software. What it can do. So as I mentioned, we're beginning to return to more regular in-house schedules and are already beginning to schedule in-person appointments as necessary. We anticipate the planning commission and zoning administrator will continue to hold virtual meetings for the time being, but we'll be looking and following the lead of the city council on, on the public hearing process and, and how that may open up. But we have seen that we've been able to improve our public engagement primarily through online names and be able to manage it through online, by phone and through email and deliveries. So we anticipate we'll begin in the future creating a queue system to begin letting the public into city hall sometime in the future. And we'll, we'll eventually have an open counter, maybe for a lesser period than we had in the past because we're able to do so much more through online communications and access. As COVID restrictions are living, lifted again, we anticipate doing a digital queue management system. So some of our major goals in the upcoming year are to initiate public hearings and adoption of the draft general plan, EIR in this first quarter of our next fiscal year and hold public hearings and adoption of the objective design standards. These are standards that will be necessary for us to be compliant with current state legislation as well as the upcoming housing element. And so we anticipate having these design standards in draft form by mid-year of this next fiscal year or if they end this year. We're looking at having public hearing and adoption of updated inclusionary housing and housing related fees in this upcoming fiscal year and initiation of the housing element update for the sixth arena cycle and completion of the draft update by the end of this coming fiscal year. That will be completion of the draft in order to then move forward with further sequo analysis and final adoption as we move into the next, towards the end of 2022. We will probably need to see an update to the telecommunications ordinance in the near future. There's a lot of changes in legislation and court decisions that may be affecting local control and process. So we're tracking that and we'll keep the council informed and certainly be paying attention to making changes. So the public is in our process are really the best they can be, given some of the mandates on telecommunications. Like, like housing, the state and the federal government is mandating a lot of streamlined requirements for telecommunication permits. And finally, it'll take about a year, but we'll be implementing the new land management software in this upcoming fiscal year. Dan and I have had many conversations with not just our vendor, but with the client first support team on their assistance in getting that implementation done. It's going to be challenging because we certainly are a small staff. We're going to be very busy, but we do anticipate that this will be a significant improvement to operations for years to come. So we look forward to getting that in place. We're currently relying on consultant support for some of our project review and a number of other permitting tasks. And include, including that, we brought on a part-time code enforcement officer who has started today. Today was his first day. His name is Sean Flanagan. He works with Fourleaf and we're excited about that. I know Kristen's excited about that because, you know, doing code enforcement is not her favorite pastime.
I'm excited about that.
We're also going to be, we are recruiting for a new associate planner position to help backfill the assistant planner position that we lost earlier this year. And we will be recruiting for a, a permit technician, permit technician position in the near future. With that, we do continue to pursue opportunities for shared service, both building and code enforcement services. Those are fairly standardized fields. We think that they do provide good opportunity for shared services. And we'll be evaluating the structure of the building division. Again, as we bring on new land management software, we recognize there will be some efficiencies in our interactions with the public and with each other that will be gained through that. But nonetheless, we remain in constant communication with other nearby agencies with regards to shared services in those fields. And with that, I would just like to take a moment to thank our longtime senior planner Kristen Tyke and our permit technician Jim Carrigan. They've been doing a lot of heavy lifting and managing to keep the permits moving and be responsive to the public questions and complaints through this fairly challenging period. So we look forward to opening up and getting more people on board to help them out.
Thanks very much, Neil. And before I open it up to the rest of the council, I just want to join in your expression of appreciation to Kristen. She has taken on a lot of responsibility, not only for permitting, but also for enforcement. And I hope, you know, the new hire is going to help lift some of that pressure from her, but she's done a terrific job and is very much appreciated. I have another question, but I'll defer to other members of the council if anyone has questions or comments.
I would just say, Neil, you, you have a very busy schedule going on there. So just kudos to you and the team for getting all this done and such constraints. Every time I kind of come up into the city hall to pick up mail, there's all, there's always a whirlwind of activity that's happening in a safe wave with your staff. So kudos to your team there.
Anyone else from the council?
Thanks, Neil. Great job.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and just one question from me, Neil. I mean, is it, is it realistic to think that we'll actually be wrapped up on the general plan before the end of this calendar year?
Oh, I think it's realistic. We're getting near, we're near ready to release the draft. I've been talking with our environmental consultant who did assist with the general plan update. One of the challenges that we've, one of the things that we kind of had to slow down and think about and work on was with the upcoming arena being what it is. We've got a draft arena. And it is draft technically, but there's, it's really the elephant in the room between the arena and Plan Bay Area. We thought it prudent to do the analysis, the sequel analysis to consider that potential level of build out. So we began having that discussion and recognize those issues. So as we get into the housing element, we're able to tear off of some of that work for the housing element process. So ultimately, after we do the housing element, we won't be, we anticipate we won't be as burdened with the, the level of sequel review by that time. So that's one of the things that's, we, we've been working on. And also, we're working on some issues and questions regarding, they're related to the general plan in regards to the state site and, and the state's housing project in San Quentin. That's not really slowing it down, but I anticipate we'll have that draft year out pretty soon for public review and try to get it wrapped up by summertime. It's going to be challenging to dig too deep into the housing element until we've kind of got the general plan wrapped up. And we'd like to do that expediently.
That's, 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 that's a good answer. Thank you very much for that. Anything else from the council? Seeing none. We'll just take a moment to ask if there's anyone from the public.
Our first comment will come from Kevin Carroll.
Yeah, thank you and good evening. Mr. Topped, I was just wondering, I was looking at the numbers regarding the arena and it would appear, and that's why I'm asking the question, as you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it looked like we're behind about 54 units of very low and low and moderate housing right now. And I think the draft number is over 500. They're proposing for the next cycle. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's just, I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, the majority of the numbers that we're behind right now are the significant numbers in the very low category. We were, our last arena had identified up to 40 units.
And is there any anticipation what the San Quentin or the sewer might add to the, either of those numbers, the very low and low?
How it may address it?
Yeah.
The San Quentin project could potentially address those numbers to some degree, depending on the timing of when it's issued and also the city's participation in that process. And that's what we are, we are working with the state and the Department of Housing and Community Development on that particular issue right now.
Is it significant number to that 500? Or is it, we're talking less than 150?
I think you're talking a little less than 100.
You know, I think, Neil, you can't comment on that project because it's not out of preliminary design phase. I'm sorry, Mr.
No, no, I understand. I just was wondering if there were rough numbers. I'm not asking anyone to commit to anything. Just would it be a significant contribution or just a contribution?
I would not. I would not want a member of the Larkspur staff to comment at this time on that project.
Yeah, no, this is this is a work in progress and and. I think it's premature to really think about those issues in any greater detail. And I see a council member. Scott, you have a question?
I did not. Sorry, my son just went by the window, so I just waved to him.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, anyone else from the public?
Looking for any further raised hands from our audience members, and there is no public comment.
Okay, great. Okay, well, thank you again, Neil. You've you're doing yeoman's work and again, very much appreciate. Everything you and your staff do. You're you're heavily burdened and do a great job and I'm. Really thrilled about the development on the enforcement front. So good. Let's then switch over to our next presentation if we could.
Per the mayor, we've been three hours. Would you mind a five minute break for refreshing water glasses?
Yeah, not at all. You want to take a few minutes to to break right now? We'll do that.
Is that all right with everyone? Okay.
Absolutely. Sure. I think everyone's kind of coming back on. And there's Dan. So do we have everyone? We need to get started again. I think so.
So next up will be our community services director, Franklin Escalera. Sorry, Kathy, it's alphabetical order. She looked ready to go.
She did look ready to go.
Thanks, everybody. As you know, this is my first time presenting, so I didn't know if we had a template. So here's my presentation. So as you know, the community services department is the combination of the Larkspur Library and Larkspur Recreation. So this is, it's been a hard year for us, but departments that really rely on working with the community, working with our public. It's been a challenge, but we've risen to the challenge and have, you know, continued to move forward. So we'll start with the library. Work right. So the library, we started, this year we started out providing remote services. Curbside services. And then now we're in the stage where tomorrow we'll be reopening. So we're really excited about that. But our remote services that we've got, we've got a lot of a lot of help from our partners, the Friends Library, the Commons, the Larkspur Library Foundation and the State Library. We were able to add new services to our lineup, Consumer Reports, Gail Presents U-Demi in the Brain Fuse. Joining now, I can barely see it. Sorry about that, guys. But it's. An ability for veterans to get job training and job interview things that they can do for free through the library's databases. Our ebooks and the audio books during COVID and the time that we closed has gone up substantially. Our users across the whole Marin Net Systems, which is including us, has gone up considerably. Children's and teen books for the first time. Have been checked out in high demand and we've been adding to those collections. But this was our year to really show that our community, what we had been using. And that what we had for a long time that people just didn't realize we have. We've had Mango and Overdrive, which is Libby, this little circle down here in the corner. For a while. So our people, we have gotten them to adapt ebooks and the audio books. On Canopy, we're now joined forces with Marin Free County Free Library and San Rafael. So we have a joint account now to give our. Our community more access and more films each month to watch different documentaries and different films. So and you can all do this with your library card. It's free. We've also turned our attentions because part of the library has always been about. Programs, storytime, talks, events, author visits and programs that we have. So we've turned this all to virtual. So. Theresa now does storytime twice a week that we live stream on our Facebook pages. We've partnered with the UC Master Gardeners have been giving monthly garden talks. I'm really all about building communities. So we started finding our local authors and giving them a platform to talk about their new books. Since they weren't able to go out to their normal book tours. So we've had these great interviews with authors every month. We've also continued to do our science and art programmings virtually with the DeYoung Museum, with Ron Rosanna, who's the NASA ambassador. We've had them come online in our Zoom talks to give talks. We've also had some joint program that we've done with the county. We had. Keith Knight, who was the artist who was behind the the show Choke that was on. Or Woke that was on Hulu. So we've done a lot of great virtual programs and all these programs we record and are on the library's YouTube channel. So even though people may not be able to get on when we have it online, they are able to go back and watch it. And so we've started to build. This collection of programming that we have through the library's YouTube channel, just like the city has with council meetings. People can go back and watch these. We've had a lot of great talks that people have missed, but we have hundreds and hundreds of views of all these videos that we have recorded on and are online and available to the public. Curbside service has really been a boon for the library, even though we've been close to the public, we have been at fifty percent of our circulation just through curbside service. So we have, most of it's all done through holds. And as you can see, this is a picture of our whole shelf. It was completely full. We use three bays down in the children's room to put all the holds on that we package and prep to have people. Ready for them to pick up outside. We're currently checking about fourteen hundred items out a week. So this is videos, books, audio books that we package that we get from all all the different libraries in the area that come here. Since our collections are shared with the rest of the Marin Net System. We also have been providing tax forms. When people call, we will put them out for curbside and we've had a lot of patrons who don't have access to a printer. So we've continued since COVID began to, if people need a label printed, if they need a return label printed, we've been offering that service. And we have it ready for them at curbside. But our big project is, and we still do a lot of readers advisor. Me and Teresa have done a lot of. Finding books for people. We get random calls for parents who just need books for their children. We have people who just want a movie or they just want five movies. That just tells to grab some stuff. So. We've continued to do a lot of our traditional readers advisor of the phone, preparing bags for readers, finding new novels and mysteries for author or for. People who haven't just been able to come in. And I know that's one of our big things is our browsers. And so we're excited that we're starting to reopen the library starting tomorrow. And we're going to open a couple days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays from eleven to five. Our video and book drops have been reopened, so they're open twenty four hours, seven days a week again. So we don't have the little green bin out there anymore. So people can drop off their material. We are going to have fifteen minute appointments for people to visit the library. This is in the hope to, we have to keep the capacity down. Due to COVID restrictions, so we're at fifty percent capacity, but with fifteen minute appointments, we're hoping that more people can come through quickly, get what they need and get out. And go back to their day. So until the restrictions are lifted, we're sort of confined to these restraints. And right now fifty percent of the library capacity. Is what we're looking at. So. And then we're still trying to ensure the public safety and the staff's safety when they're in the library. We have hand sanitizers now. We just put down little floor mats that say, you know, six feet apart. We know these rules are going to change soon. But we just wanted to make sure that people knew that we were taking this seriously and we are trying to make sure that we create a safe environment for the public. What's changed inside the library is we don't have any public seating. So we do have a chair, as you can see in this picture over here by our large collection, because we know we do have patrons who need to sit down. To look at books and we have a couple little stools around the building, but the library's staff is always willing to help people find material. We did remove the reference desk because that was a safety issue with, there was no way to really make a good barrier for the reference desk. For Teresa or anybody sitting there because the patrons would be standing over you. So we removed the desk for now, but we will be doing mobile. Reference with the iPad and still when we're back at our desk, we'll be able to answer calls and help people as they need. We returned a lot of the tables that we have into display space to make it more like a little bookstore. So people will come in. We have, like you see a best pictures display. So we pulled out all the movies that have won best picture award for the last twenty years. We have them on display. We have a Hemingway one and upstairs we have some. Displays of cookbooks and history books. So we're trying to get so people can come through, pick what they need, pick up stuff. We've also added a self checkout, a second self checkout machine that will go in the children's room by the arc, our temporary entrance. So those are some of the big things that are coming. We still have a lot of goals. We're still waiting for the DTEC locker. That's the Amazon Top Block locker that will go behind City Hall that will add service points to the library that people can come and pick up material afterward. And in the evenings, we're still continuing to get ready for RFID, which is a partnership with the county. If you don't know what RFID is, a radio frequency. Device that it sort of will make the library material check out quicker, faster, and we'll have that going through. We're still looking to, you know, as the COVID restrictions are lifted, to work with our community partners to plan programming, to do outreach. And then once we get these. Restrictions lifted, we'll be able to bring back the the comfortable spaces that people were used to in the library. And those are what our goals are. Recreation and the library are still facing that same dilemma of what are the new restrictions going to look like and how they're going to change. So as we go over to recreation. We just want to talk about the community garden. That's one of our most popular things right now. We're also. Super cool summer school and kinder camp are back in session this year. And and then we're just looking forward to programming after COVID. So the community garden, as you know, right now is very popular. The waitlist is for five years. So most people who get on the waitlist, it's a five year wait, but they slowly are moving into giving garden spaces. We're also preparing for the drought. So we, the gardeners have started sending out messages. To our current gardeners, our volunteers anyway, to help the gardeners and their planters know that we're going to have these drought restrictions and how to plan for it and what we should be planting. Super cool summer school, as you know, is starting June fourteenth to June twenty fifth. We have, it's a smaller, more compact model this year. We modeled it after the schools. Cohorts so that we could get people in to make it safe. But as you know, the cohort changed changed over the last few weeks. So. We could add more, but when we set up the program, we had a lot of restrictions in place. And the instructors also asked us to keep the classes small. So for this year, we're still going to keep it small this way, but it's a little more nimble and a little less hectic on the staff. And today we started interviewing our volunteers that will help us count camp counselors. So that was a really fun thing to get. To do. And then we also have the kinder camp that will be in August at the basic elementary school. It will be August second through August thirteen. And we'll also have more teen volunteers helping as camp counselors with that program as well. But we're really looking forward to when after COVID, we know that we've been waiting for the restrictions to change. Because that's really limited what we can do outside in outdoor spaces. It's also limited what we can do internally for indoor spaces. So once those new restrictions are given to us, we'll hopefully be able to. You know, get some of our programming back up and running. I know some of our Larkspur walkers are really anxious to get back out to walk. But right now, some of the volunteers don't want to deal with some of the restrictions. So we're still trying to see how the restrictions are lifted and how they. Will shape and what we can restore. And then we're also, once this is done, we're looking for new opportunities to build better partnerships with our community organizations. To help us with our programming. And that's actually one of the goals for the department is to look to the community partners that we have to help us. Provide programming to the community that we can help and make us more fun. And I think that's an opportunity for community services itself. Is how do we create these opportunities and create stronger partnerships with our community based organizations here in town? So. I'm sorry, I was really quick, but I know it's been really long. Did you guys have any questions or?
No, thank you so much for that presentation. It's dealing with the library. I mean, you've just been wonderful in. Being flexible and managing the resources that you have and it's. It's very nice to see. being flexible and managing the resources that you have. And it's, it's very nice to see this presentation to confirm all of that. Are there any questions from the council?
I have one.
Okay, I gotta change my screen here. Hold on.
Okay, let me stop the share. Let me get easier, guys.
There you go. Okay.
Hi Franklin, I'm looking forward to library opening again. I've noticed all the people sitting on the steps getting the wifi, getting the wifi continuously. So two things. One is how has the relationship with the Tamil Pious, which I know is a big user of our services, been doing okay with that?
We've continued since they allowed us to start sending deliveries back up again. We have continued every Wednesday to send delivery. I know that me and Teresa are also waiting for them to green light us to go back into the building.
Okay.
Because eventually, once they say it's okay for us to go back in, we can start resuming the programming that we were doing before. But we do talk to a lot of our residents all the time on the phone. We were finding material for them, finding books for them. We have a couple of them that are love audiobooks. So we're trying to make sure that we're getting the material that they're looking for. But we've continued to keep that relationship going. There was a couple of days where the delivery driver missed the pickup and the residents panic. And usually we just tell us, come knock on the door and we'll bring the bag out to you. We'll do the hostage exchange at the door. But we've tried to make sure that they continue to get that service. And a lot of them, you know, because they can call us on the phone, we've been able to track down material, track down the items that they really want. And it's been really good. We're just waiting for them to say it's okay, we can come back in. Because I know their book club wants to resume and they love the talks that we were giving before. So.
Great. And my, my second point is, I love your comment about trying to partner with more community organizations and nonprofits to provide sort of that overlap of services. Consider me a resource for that because my co-chair for a committee I'm on is the director of the Marin Voad, which is the Marin Volunteer Organizations Active in Disaster, who's been key in this last year, working with the nonprofits on COVID response. And so she is very connected, Adriana, who's a co-chair with me on a couple of committees. She's very connected to the local nonprofits and who the key resources are, who, so reach out to me about that because I'd love to help you. I think we have a great opportunity to partner with our nonprofits in Larkspur and in Central Marin alone. There's a lot of terrific nonprofits who could provide a lot of resources for you. So reach out to me about that. And I'd love to help.
Thank you, Catherine. I see Vice Mayor Helmer has his hand up.
Hi Franklin, thanks for a great presentation. It's been a real learning experience and a pleasurable one, joyful for me to watch you assume leadership roles in the, at the library and also with the Parks and Rec. So as a community services director, you've been doing a great job holding things together and creatively looking to the future here. What are some of your takeaways with your, in your leadership role now that you're seeing these two departments and services trying to coexist together in this challenging environment? I imagine you're identifying some problems you haven't seen before. Well, maybe a few opportunities.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunities for us to do things together. I think this is, a lot of times recreation and libraries have been at odds with each other just because of the nature of what we do and sort of how we're funded. And I know that was always a case. And I think if you ever saw the TV show Parks and Rec, you'd always see how the librarians were fighting with the rec people. But it's, a lot of our mission is the same. And what I'm trying to get, both the library and the rec staff to realize is that we're, it's, we're serving the same purpose. We can reach the same kids, we can reach the same adults in the community, and we can do some stuff that we can do together. And that's why, like even my friends at the library have to say, this is an opportunity for us to spread our meshes, but it works both ways. For us to promote recreation programs and to promote library programs. And also I think in my goals, and you see the budget thing, I put a line in about the, it's about the body and the mind. The body is recreation and the mind is the library. And we can have these blending together. And this is one of the big projects I'm working on with the rec supervisor now because one of the worries was that Super Cool Summer School couldn't be this big project like it used to be. You can't hold the volume of students that we normally would have done just because of the restraints of COVID. So we're trying to recreate something that we use at the library for our digital summer reading program is to create something that's just purely activity-based, but using that same little app. But we'll take families all over town and all over the county to do stuff together. And that could be this, you know, add-on that we normally to do to provide activities for for our youngsters in the community. Because that's really one of the big things is we know that a recreation had always been that place for people to go after school, for programs, for sports, for adults to get that, you know, those things that they like to do. And so we're trying to see how we're going to move those forward and what we can create new. And then what isn't working anymore. And I think we've, we're still trying to get through all these little bits and pieces. And Dan knows that we're trying to get through, to make sure that we're nimble and that we can, you know, do everything that we need to do, but also provide that learning and lifelong learning experience for our community. So.
Well, thank you. My, my perception is that you're the, you're the right man for the right job at the right time.
Thanks.
You're here. I agree with that completely. Anyone else from the council? Seeing none, I just, you know, before we open it to the public, if there are any public comments, I just want to reiterate what Vice Mayor Helmer just said. You've, Franklin, you've just addressed challenges that we haven't faced in the past. And you've done it with, with grace and success and on our part with great appreciation. I actually think that the merging of these, the different functions that are now under your auspices has been a net positive for our community. And and I don't think it would have happened without your leadership. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the council? Anyone from the public? Allison?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And there's no public comment.
Okay, thank you. That was a terrific presentation. I appreciate it so much. Yes, great. Keep it up. Okay, Dan, I think we have one more.
Kathy Arm's turn. I know she's raring to go.
She was ready to go about a little while ago.
Geez Franklin, how am I supposed to follow that with all your enthusiasm and energy? Are you kidding me? This is, thank you.
Oh, you can do it.
All right. Well, I'm trying, I've got something very, very short and sweet, trying to be on the light side for finance because I'm always a little boring. So let's see if I can share my screen for the first time and pull up my presentation. And if I can't figure it out, I have backup. Her name is Allison. Allison said she would back me up. So I don't see files. Well. Hey Allison, I don't see where my files are on my desktop.
Okay, I'm sharing my screen and just tell me when to advance the slide.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, short and sweet. So Finance Department. One thing I want to start with is that the Finance Department runs three separate agencies out of us. We do the, all the finances for the city of Larkspur, Central Marin Police Authority and Ross Valley Fire Department. And we may be the smallest department with only three employees, but we are an efficient group. So team efficiency. Next slide. And we also need to be accurate and efficient. As accountants, we have to be accurate, but we also being accurate and efficient need to be concerned about time and timeliness. Next slide. Time management is really especially important in COVID time. And we were, can we kind of put it to place? Like, we were tested, like, we always thought that in a, in a kind of a disaster emergency, that we'd be able to get up and running and keep things floating. And we were tested in COVID to see if we could do that. And we absolutely did. Next slide. We stepped up seamlessly and to transition to start working remotely. And it is from our Tyler system who is hosted, that was means that we were able to get ourselves up and running on laptops. We can, if you have your system at home, if you have parallels on your system, you can get Tyler up and running and a safe portal almost anywhere you can work. So that was key. We also learned that we needed to communicate by emails and doing approvals and reviewing documents. And the DocuSign was a huge help for me. I know with the less printing and being able to sign off on documents. So kudos to us for being able to get up and get everything running. We continue to process payroll. We never missed a beat. Everybody got paid on time in a timely manner. The city continued to get the checks cut and invoices paid to keep our city financially afloat. And then last but not least, we also did all our audit and financial reporting that's required for the federal, state and local agency reportings. We filed all our reports in a timely manner without incident. We also have our audit firm, Edwani and Associates, were, they're kind of ahead of theirselves in that they had, they are using a drop site, a secure drop site for audit. And they started that in our audit in two thousand and nineteen. So our audit in two thousand and twenty, we had worked the whole audit remotely through Zoom calls, through emails. So I think that's, it's quite an accomplishment to say that we could do a city audit completely remotely. And then we're actually planning to do it again this year because we have our interim audit starting in June right around the corner. Next slide. So what was really, what's ahead for us? What kind of goals do we have? Most importantly, I think it's going to be efficiencies, being accurate and be timely, I think is key for any finance department. Paperless, I probably not a hundred percent paperless, but we're working on it. We're working on reducing our printing and having our files be filed via electronically now. And we also have been exploring how to automate further our AP process. But with, there's a lot of financial fraud out there. And so we want to make sure that one, it's very safe and two, it doesn't double the workload because there are some of the programs you would have to enter twice. And it's like, that just doesn't make sense. There's, we've lost our efficiency there. So with that said, that's all we have for tonight. We'll have lots more coming in the next council meeting. So, thank you. If you have any questions, let me know.
That was quick.
I told you it would be quick.
Well, thank you. I think at this point in the evening, we appreciate that a lot. And we, and only because we expect to hear much, much more from you in upcoming meetings. So.
It'll be a really dry.
We, we, some of us like that sort of thing. I see Vice Mayor Helmer's head is up.
Hi Kathy, I just want to acknowledge that Kathy not only manages the city's finances, but she also manages some of our joint powers authorities, including Ross Valley Paramedics and others. So she's, she's running quite a complex operation. And I have an apology to make, and I'll make one tonight and I'll make one tomorrow night at Ross Valley. I apologize to Jennifer Emery for not recognizing her name when she sends me requests for approvals of invoices. As President of Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, I apologize to you, Jennifer, and I'll apologize to you tomorrow night as well. I'm learning the process. I'm getting better at it and I promise I'll, I'll hold up my end.
I'll let her know. It's all, it's all learning. So we're, you know, we're learning how as we go. So there are problems there.
Well, I'm learning about the communications and the look for invoices and strings of emails, et cetera. So I'm, I'm getting, I promise to get better.
We appreciate your expression of humility. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Any other comments or questions from the council? I see Catherine Way.
Kathy, thank you for that. I know you, it's been a long day for you, I'm sure. So I just want to acknowledge also the hard work that a team of three does to maintain the books for three agencies at a minimum. And to how quickly you responded to my email the other day when I gave you my new bank account information. And it alerted me to the fact that we need to be very, the backstory is I changed banks and I sent my information to Kathy so that the direct deposit would be changed. And she responded immediately and said, please call me because there has been a lot of fraud that's, or emails that have come through the city server and others that are phishing expeditions. So I really, I want to thank you for reaching out to me. And we had a nice conversation on the phone that confirmed that it actually came from me. But I realized that you have so many buckets that you're trying to, to balance all the time. So I appreciate that you were responsive to sort of a question I had like that. And good luck in the audit. As the rules change all the time.
Well, I know everybody's tired. All of my fellow department heads are always tired of hearing me say I'm in audit again. But it rolls, it's a cycle, budget audit, budget audit. So it's okay.
That's why, that's why I became a nurse and not an accountant.
Thanks Kathy for, for your presentation. Any other comments or questions from the council? I see Scott, you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted a real quick comment. Kathy, I'm blown away, not, not just by, by your adaptability, but you know, the city manager, to everybody who spoke today, that COVID was, could have been such chaos. And our city handled it so well. And I just, I, I'm really, I can't express how impressed I am by all the department heads that just were able to adapt and handle whatever was thrown at them. And I just want to say thank you and that you are appreciated. That's all.
Here, here. Anything else from the council? Allison, anyone from the public?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And there's no public comment.
Okay, great. Well, Dan, I think, is there anything else on this item?
I was just going to add one point because Kathy and I do share responsibility for the administrative management of the city. And there are other members of our team, I just want to briefly acknowledge and speak to you many times, which are Allison Foulish, your city clerk who's online, and then Shannon O'Hara, the assistant to the city manager. The theme I wanted Kathy to really hit on is that automation and the ability to operate the city remotely were the administration's tasks and theme this year. And it made me reflect back that shortly after we built the police building, our risk pool obtained a type of insurance that basically every year we would pay a sum of money. And then if there was a disaster, a city hall in a box would show up basically on an eighteen-wheeled truck. So we could operate city hall out of the truck. And it, you know, that had its appeal, but I kept thinking, well, we have this building over there that's supposed to survive the big one. So I should probably just hope it does. And then we'll go operate the city out of there. And I fast forward now, five years later, in a testament to you, all of our staff, is that we demonstrated we could run the city remotely from multiple locations and keep providing service. And so we actually rendered that type of insurance entirely obsolete by reversing, reversing the process that they were proposing. So I'm really proud of everybody for the work they did to bring that along. reversing the process that they were proposing. So I'm really proud of everybody for the work they did to bring that along.
Absolutely. That's a, that's actually a very interesting anecdote and a sign of the times that that's the direction that we all have ended up taking across the board.
So we have one more presentation to do tonight. Budget item.
Okay, good.
And I know I have 28 minutes till the curfew vote has to take place, which we haven't had to do in.
So is this item, is this item be the snapshot? Because I think we've done it at department level. Okay, go ahead.
I'll be giving you a brief snapshot to give you a sense as we go into our next budget session, which is when we'll really start pouring in the numbers about the assumptions that Kathy Orman and I have been using to build the budget. And I like to say we, so I can take some credit, but Kathy's doing most of the really hard work. So if you like something, she did it. And if you don't, you can blame me for that. Hopefully that's gonna come up as a slideshow. You know, there's a funny thing here. I'm gonna do it like this. Sorry.
Close enough.
Okay, so I kept the green that was from my last budget presentation, which was for, we were here on March 17th for St. Patrick's Day. And I thought, well, since today is Cinco de Mayo, I would retain the green and I'd add a red bar for Cinco de Mayo. So we might get a little bit of that flavor. I've, we've probably denied you a proper Cinco de Mayo celebration this evening. So our, as we've been building the budget, you'll recall that we worked closely with a number of advisors, most notably our sales tax advisor to figure out what, what are the trends that we can observe in the economy? HDL, our sales tax advisor, provides us a lot of information from an outfit called Beacon Economics, which a lot of cities use as one of the foundations for tracking the overall economy of the state of California. And here are some of the trends they're predicting for 2021. They still feel median home prices will, will climb. And we're still seeing that and observing that and that projection of 5% or more is reasonable. A lot of that's now being driven by the fact that supply is low and demand is high. So it's keeping median home prices moving upward. They're starting to project pandemic corrections and sales tax. So two areas that are particularly notable for Larkspur is we are assuming that service industry will start to claw back. And notably for us, because this is one of those things you don't think about a lot, but is a nice portion of our sales tax base are the gas stations and the convenience stores attached to them as well. And they're projecting significant growth there because that, that portion of the economy was quite normative in 2020. Internet sales are here to stay as a portion of our sales tax base, but the massive growth we saw will, will go flat, meaning we'll stay at the high level we realized. But we won't continue to see that, that pretty impressive upward trajectory. And then our hotel tax or our transient occupancy tax should begin a slow and steady growth. Over the, that'll probably take a few years before we'll see it return anywhere near pre pandemic levels. But we can, can certainly start to project a better trend there. And 2020 construction kept going and the, all the forecasters are telling us to just keep assuming that will be the case. So we've made that assumption going into this budget. So this is the first slide and I apologize if it's too small. I wish I could get that screen to look correct. The this is showing you all the way back to fiscal year 2010, 11, what the property top tax has been in millions. So you can see that the city has enjoyed a very impressive steady growth in our property tax base. And at the end of the day, this is our bread and butter. For the first time in several years, we won't realize, we believe, an upward move in property tax. And that is because we know that the Serenity Apartment Complex is now under public ownership. And that was part of the council's decision to invest in a new model for achieving affordable rental units in the community. And one of the ways that was achieved is that a joint powers authority that operates statewide and purchases apartment buildings and changes their business model in a way that allows them to manage the rents and keep them stable and affordable, purchase Serenity. And this will be the first year it comes off the books. So that accounts for the reason that for the first time, we're in quite a while, we're suggesting property tax will actually be a little bit lower than the year prior. We should then start to see the growth pattern continue as we move forward. This is the one that I think we're all anxious to talk about and we'll be talking about over the next couple of sessions, which is the trend with sales tax. It's really remarkable how the sales tax base in Larkspur has grown since I've been with the city. We, this is again in millions of dollars, but we enjoyed this sort of constant movement upward from one and a half million in 2010 in fiscal year 11, all the way to we actually cleared three, over $3 million in sales tax in our actuals for fiscal year 19. Now, one of the things that Kathy and I have always been careful about is to be conservative in our budgeting, particularly with respect to sales tax, which can, you know, shift with the economy rapidly. So if you go back and I looked at our budgets, we usually were budgeting a bit lower than these trends. And one of the reasons we had this huge blip in fiscal year 19 was that that was when the first wave of internet sales started to come through. And as some corrections were occurring in the way the state was distributing those taxes, we saw a bit of a windfall. Here's where COVID started to kick in. Last, and we suffered considerably in our last quarter of the last fiscal year. And then you can see we now had thought that we would land around here in our proposed budget for 21, our current fiscal year. We actually should end up more around $2.4 million. And that again is being driven heavily by internet sales shoring up. So we feel very comfortable that we can propose in this year's fiscal budget that the general fund had realized about 2.6 million in sales tax. And that's probably going to be our number for the next few years. That's certainly a rosier picture than we had told you last year. What it is not though, is it's not where we were headed. So we probably have a few years of hoping for slow and steady return in growth to pre pandemic conditions before we can fully plan to restore some of our ambitions and goals with respect to services that we were programming at sales tax. So good news, bad news. This is the transient occupancy tax or our hotel tax. This is another area we have always been probably overly conservative in our budgeting. And then our actuals were returning it frankly staggering numbers, particularly when you consider that something like 98.5% of our transient occupancy tax is on 99% comes from one source. So the good news for us is we were actually budgeting close to this number, I think, the year that the pandemic hit. So in terms of the impact to our budget, it was not as dramatic as we as we might have otherwise experienced. But again, the last few years, we've been booking surplus revenue in TOT and we aren't going to enjoy that anytime soon. So the general fund, this is one area where we're going to be suffering for a bit as we wait for the hotel to recover. Most economists that I've listened to who talk about Marin, in particular with respect to hospitality, think we'll be on a curve that's very similar to when we came out of the recession. So that curve is kind of what you see ending over here. And so I think we'll see these kinds of levels achieved and we'll see that slow and steady growth. So that five years out, we're kind of back to these robust numbers if all goes well. Two other revenue points I just want to highlight that are important because we focus a lot on the general fund, but there are some other monies to keep in mind. One is measure B is remaining steady. That's our local sales and transaction tax, transaction sales tax. And so that's what we're using to do our debt service on our road project. There are surplus funds accumulating in the measure B account. And so this year I'll be working through the oversight committee to bring recommendations on what are appropriate reserve levels for the measure B program? And then if there are monies above that reserve level, how should we put it to work? And certainly heard the public works director highlighting the one that he and I worry about the most, which is possibly is our sewer, our storm drains. And this could be a potential place where we get some money to address our storm drains. I put the American Rescue Plan on the list, but we continue to be uncertain exactly what that's going to look like. We do anticipate some level of one time money coming into the city and we should treat it as one time money as we figure out how to program it. So we won't be programming it into the budget that we bring to you next meeting. Instead Kathy and I will continue to monitor it. And when we know what that amount is, we'll bring it to you to talk about as a one time infusion of cash to the city. There are some key expenditure proposals I wanted to highlight tonight. Your next meeting is where we really go dive deep into the expenditures. First, we're going to formalize the community services department, which you heard Franklin talking about. We think this model is going to work for us. And so we're going to maintain it for the foreseeable future. So this budget, you'll really see us embracing and programming around that model and the expenditures that we anticipate. Our goal is to start to increase our service levels as our, as the pandemic restrictions subside. So that in particular affects community services where we cut the deepest in, because of the restrictions we were experiencing. That particularly leads to personnel decisions. We're gonna include in the budget, you're going to see the addition of three full time positions. One is restoring the permit tech position that we froze. A lot of permit tech cost is offset from building fee revenue. And given that construction costs have been robust or construction revenues have been robust, we think we can easily manage the cost of a permit technician. The two the general fund will have to absorb a little more significantly are adding the librarian, which we're recruiting for now in the hopes of hiring when the fiscal year starts. We really are going to need that person, even operating in COVID has been challenging without this librarian position filled. And now that we're going to be open up to the public, we really need this extra person to manage the situation. And then, as I said, we're embracing the community services model. So for the first time, we're going to program a position that will be working for both the library and recreation. We're going to hire an entry level assistant position and with a heavy emphasis on community, I mean, a customer service. And that person will spend their time between both departments. Franklin will have the discretion to put them in one department when there's a high demand and in the other department, when there's a man in that such a situation. And otherwise, most of the year, we would expect them to spend about half the time in each, each of the two divisions. That'll be a big change for us though. And we're hoping to bring that in the next meeting or two for approval of the new positions. And then I just want to prepare you for some of the things you're going to see. There will be a structural deficit in this budget. And so what I mean by that is the budget will come to you with a deficit. It will probably be in the magnitude of a half a million dollars. And that's structural in the sense that we are committing to expenditures above revenues. And those expenditure commitments will trans, they'll go past the next fiscal year. We are in a very healthy position in our reserves, both for our general fund and our transient occupancy tax fund. So we can easily absorb a structural deficit of that magnitude for one year. And we think revenue growth over the next few years will cure the deficit as long as we maintain our expenditure levels responsibly. I would do want to highlight on that TOT reserve, you authorized me to borrow from the TOT reserve this year. And I don't think we're going to need to do that. So all, you authorized me to borrow if necessary, up to half a million dollars out of that fund to cover shortfalls this year. And we think we've done well enough that we won't be making that borrow at all. So that magnitude of funds are available to us next year, which is a really positive thing.
That's good news.
And then the general fund. You'll recall, we've been building surplus money in the general fund reserve to deal with the cash flow needs of the bridge and the road program. And so as we reach the end of both those projects, we have a healthy reserve and we're going to be less constrained on our cash flow. So we can again feel pretty comfortable. We're in a position to manage a structural deficit in this upcoming fiscal year. And this was part of our two year plan to cope with COVID and cope with the impacts. So overall, I think we're right on track for where we hope to be, if not better off because our revenues were stronger this year than we expected them to be. And I, when I bring you the budget with Kathy at the next meeting, I think you're going to see it's a huge testament to every staff member to operate the city within their means and do more with less. That's always our theme and it was no more true than this past year. And I also just want to thank the council. Our reserves are healthy, even with you having allowed me to invest quite a bit of money in technology this year, which I, I pulled that money out of these reserve accounts to do that. We, we've automated the city in ways that I think the efficiencies will pay off over the next 10 years quite a bit. So that's the 10,000 foot view of what we're going to talk about in the next meeting where we start really diving into the nitty gritty. You'll recall last year, we put together a new budget book and we're hoping to actually start to bring you segments of that book, if not a full draft of that book in the next couple of weeks. So it really, I really want to thank the team that put a lot of effort into making the budget not only easier for the council to deal with, manage and comprehend, but for the public to digest and look their way through. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm available and Kathy's available to talk generally about our assumptions and where we think things are going and questions you might have at this point.
I want to thank both you, Dan and Kathy for both your presentations and your hard work in keeping us on the straight and narrow fiscally. I think it's a testament actually to the city historically in its conservative approach to financial affairs that we've been able to have the reserves that we have that will cushion the blows that we're facing now and maybe in, into the coming year. So there was actually more good news in that report than I anticipated. So thank you very much for that. Any other comments from the council?
I, I just had one for the mayor. I had just one question and, and I don't want it tonight, but at our next presentation, I'd love you to elaborate on the internet purchases, sales growth. Because in the pandemic year, people have been purchasing more things online. And I know we have that. Is it the Wayfair or whatever that? So just elaborate a little bit more on that next time. And I, I really appreciate that, but not tonight because it's not the time. So.
I will make a note to put some emphasis on that. On a very simple statistical note, though, statewide, the internet sales were up 19% in terms of revenue across the state, sales tax revenue. That's just off the internet. That's not overall. So that gives you a sense of why we were able to shore up things, but I'll go to.
No, I think that would be helpful. I also ran into Sam, the general manager of the Marriott Hotel at, at recently at place where I was. And he said many of his patrons were the people who were staffing the Larkspur Landing COVID-19 inoculation site. So when that is disbanded, I hope we still continue to see opportunities for patrons to accommodate the Marriott hotels. So I mean, he was seeing a real bump up because I mean, he was seeing a real bump up because they were using his hotel for that staffing. So that's all. Thanks.
Thanks for that. Any, any, anyone else on the council?
Thank you, Dan.
I did want to close, Mr. Mayor, just noting for the public's interest to Centralman Police Authority and Centralman Fire Authority meetings next week on Thursday, and they'll be reviewing their budgets. We certainly have a, a material interest for our budget. So folks who are really interested in, in the city's finances might want to tune into those meetings and they can get information on either of those agencies' websites about how to log in.
Yeah, I thank you that, for that. Unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to make that, those meetings, but I think we're, we're gonna be covered. So unless we have anything else, is there, are there any comments from the, the public before we move to the next?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And there's no public comment.
Okay, well, thank it's everyone for your presentations and for giving us a preview of what's to come. I think this has been a challenging year, but I think it's gonna start looking better and better over the next few years. So I think with that, we'll end on eight point two, an update on city activities and finances with regard to COVID.
I just wanted to underscore that tomorrow is the first day that in quite a while, the public will be admitted into the library. And I want to thank the staff. They walked me through it for about forty-five minutes today of what their plan is. And I think they've fought through as best they can. And now we have to test it and have some folks come on in and see what happens. In addition, I want to acknowledge that the planning and building department is starting to make itself open for limited appointments. So it's not a walk-in as you will, but there are ways to make appointments. And you will be seeing on our website tomorrow, we have a, a software program that will allow folks to book appointments. You can still do it the old fashioned way and you can call us. And the library certainly will let you in if there's room when you come. We are constrained under the COVID rules. So I believe we will not be letting more than fourteen patrons in a library at any one time. So you will see somebody at the door doing a head count and closing the door if we hit fourteen. So I sort of jokingly told Franklin, the new appointment system is kind of like the Fastpass system at Disney. If you make an appointment and we actually are full, we'll put you at the front of the line. So maybe that'll be the incentive for us to try it out. And James Holmes is no longer logged on, but I saw the copier. It's there. It's ready to be made available tomorrow to the public.
There you go. That'll make James happy.
He, he did stop me at the, at the public process in the parking lot and mentioned that he needed, that he needed the printer to work because we needed the printer to work. So thank you for doing that.
Above it, above and beyond. All right. Any, any, anything else from the council? Anyone from the public, Allison?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And there's no public comment.
Great. Well, and, and again, just a reminder, we have that next special meeting coming up on the Parklets and other issues. That's on what day is that? Can you remind me, Allison?
It'll be on Monday, May twenty-fourth.
May twenty-fourth. Okay. So obviously that's something that people should pay attention to and, and are invited as well. So unless we have anything else, I think we are now at our final agenda item, which is number nine, adjourn, and I will entertain a motion.
So moved. I, I, I moved the adjournment.
Yes, we gather that. We got a second. So so unless, so with that objection, I will adjourn the meeting tonight. Thanks very much. And we look forward to the budget next time. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.